Okay, one, two, three board members. And Harlan's not going to show up, so I'm going to start when I see Marnie. Oh, no, Harlan did show up. I lied. Okay.
Been here the whole time.
Oh, I know, but you didn't have your camera on and I switched to that setting that you don't turn up if your camera's off, so. Sorry. Okay, are we ready to start? Board? Thumbs up, anything? Okay. I am going to call this meeting of the Issaquah School Board into session. This is Thursday, January 14th, 2021. I'm going to have to get used to that. The board has been in executive session on collective bargaining and it did go a little bit late, so I apologize for that. For those of you who have been eagerly waiting for us to start. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and we next go to student input. And tonight we have Rishi Hazra and Forrest Williams from Skyline High School. I will let you guys decide who goes first. You can answer one of the stock questions or you can just tell us what's going on at Skyline and how's remote learning going? Or pretty much the floor is yours. Forrest, go ahead. Can you unmute? No.
Steven has, you have to unmute him, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we've been dealing with the remote environment in Skyline. One of the questions that we were given was, what was something that you would change about your school or education? And I wanted to touch on previously, maybe last year, what I would have changed versus how this new environment has affected that and what I'd change now. So in this new environment, I know a lot of the higher level students in the IB program at Skyline have been very quick to adjust simply because we kind of have to. We're on a bit of a time crunch for all of our IB exams. So we've been under a little bit of stress to adapt quickly. And in our student survey, 90% of students said that they were comfortable with Canvas. I know however, with talking with our student body, that's not as much seen in our freshman student body because there's not as much urgency on them. So the freshmen are struggling a little bit to adapt to this new format. I do want to say that there's been a lot of negative response to remote learning. It's a very complicated new format. But one thing I would have changed last year from my education was a lot of teachers' websites were all over the place. It was very difficult to find what assignments were due the next day. I know for my history class last year, I accidentally did the 12th grade assignment instead of my assignment and I came into class looking a little bit foolish. However, with this new Canvas and Zoom platform, I think we've been able to experiment a little bit with these new formats. And I could see us using a Canvas platform in the future to have all of our assignments in one place. So I know it's a little hard to be optimistic in the environment that we're in. But by experimenting with these new platforms and formats, I think it lays good groundwork for the future of our collective educational experience. And one thing that I would change currently is that we used to have last year at Skyline, a program where transfer students were accompanied by Skyline students to kind of get to know Skyline, to be introduced to some people and brought into the Skyline and the Issaquah School District family. We still have a similar program today, but it's so much more difficult to build our school environment. I know that's something that Rishi and I have been working on at ASB, at Skyline High School. However, if I could change one thing about my educational experience, it would just be having a little bit more social time with my peers. All right, I think we'll go to Rishi here.
He has to be unmuted.
I'm sorry. You'd think I'd get it after the first three times.
Well, thank you. I'd like to just kind of affirm what Forrest mentioned about how online schooling has been going well in that we have discovered this platform Canvas that many students have kind of grown to become accustomed to and it's working well for all of them. I did want to say that personally for me, stress has been real and it's been augmented in this new virtual setting. But, and I'm sure many others have done the same, I've settled in this kind of rhythm, experimenting with lots of tools and like being able to manage my workload. I know one of the tools I've kind of come to use is Microsoft To Do. That has helped minimize my stress. And I did want to mention that one of the surveys said that over 90% of the students find current resources that have been provided by our school to be helpful. And I think schools should follow the same method and make other organizational tools more easily accessible, especially those that the school has already subscribed to. I know there's Office 365 subscriptions. There's a subscription to Adobe Creative Cloud. I only found out about these through some specific teachers. I think if the school itself kind of pushes these out more to parents and students, it'll help kind of decrease our overall stress and help minimize our workload. One of the prompts that was given to us was to kind of elaborate on something that put us outside our comfort zone. For me, that is, in one class I have, I'm the only student with my camera on and I can tell that there's this kind of inevitable stigma that onlookers or teachers kind of instinctively make and it's really hard to get rid of that. But that's around students without their cameras on and the assumption is that they're either not present or they're not engaged. But the point is that it's really difficult to have to turn your camera on, especially being the first student to do so because you have all of these black screens and then now all of a sudden you're the only face on there and now it's like everyone else is looking at you, but you can't see anyone. So I think that it's important for teachers and such to be aware that there's this high social pressure in turning this camera on. And in normal in-person school, it would be much different and it would be easier to be engaged. And inevitably, when we have our cameras off, it's easy to become disengaged and not really absorb the resources that are being provided to us from our teachers. Unfortunately, ASB has worked a lot through our social media networks to kind of push out to the students how important it is to remain engaged and to have our cameras on. And then we've kind of built this community where it feels safe. I do think that it's possible and I'm really struggling for ideas here in which ways that the school can kind of either encourage it more by communicating with parents or kind of having a communication established between students and teachers to kind of emphasize why or why not they don't have their camera on, whether it's a technical issue, a personal comfort issue, or kind of discover a way for a student to show their engagement just so that their relationship with their teachers doesn't become marginalized or they don't feel out of their comfort zone. And I did want to mention that no student ever appreciates the awkwardness that teachers have to deal with considering that they're kind of talking there and then sometimes there's no response. So given the opportunity, I'm sure many students would be glad to take it and I'd appreciate if some thought could go into that.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your input. I know that whole cameras on, cameras off thing has generated a lot of conversation. And Forrest, thank you for finding something optimistic in the world that we're in right now where it isn't, there's not a lot optimistic people are saying right now around remote education, so I do appreciate that. Just a note to Steven, somebody just messaged me in the chat that they couldn't get any video on the YouTube feed. Video, audio, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's just that person or if there's a problem with the YouTube feed, but it's outside my comfort area, so I'm throwing it to you.
Thank you. It doesn't start until you guys are ready. So when it starts late, we tend to get those messages.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is streaming now.
Okay, sorry, I just, somebody messaged me in the chat and I don't know what to do. Okay, so we are, thank you very much students and also please know you are welcome to stay as long as you can. And if you have any questions or input on any of the agenda items, we would love to hear from you. Either raise your hand or literally raise your hand. Also understand that if you've got homework or exams or whatever, that you might have to leave before the rest of us do, which is often into the wee hours. So, but thank you very much and I encourage you to stay as long as you can. That brings us to public input. And this would be public input on items not on the agenda. So if you want to talk specifically about returning to school, not returning to school, the Liberty Schedule, the school calendar, all those things that are on the agenda, we will call for public input on those later. So this is for any public input on items not on the agenda. I will remind you to please clearly state your name in the school attendance area. Limit your comments to two minutes and yeah, I don't think we're going to have to limit this to half an hour because I don't think we're going to have that many people. Please keep your comments civil and respectful. The emails aren't always, so we like public input to be civil. And please understand that the board will not respond to public input. That doesn't mean we're not listening and taking it into consideration. It simply means that this is not the time to have a dialogue with the board. So having said all of that, I see one hand, which is Nate.
President Weaver, I don't know if you noticed on the agenda, but I had requested just a brief opportunity to do some acknowledgement of the school board as well.
Sorry, I totally missed that. Would you like to do that first?
I would and I promise to be civil and I'll try to keep it as brief as I can as well, but I appreciate an opportunity to recognize the board as has been a tradition. And I don't know if folks, yeah, you see, my problem is I'm pixelating today, but oh, you'll see it right there in front of me. I'm holding up a proclamation from Governor Inslee that is designating January is School Board Appreciation Month. And boy, has there ever been a time to appreciate our largest group of elected officials in Washington State. Those, boy, I think almost 1,400 volunteers who oversee the operations of our public school system. And your professional organization, which you have been named Board of Distinction countless times now and Board of the Year a couple of times, the WASTA organization has sent each of you a certificate that we have signed in our office here, waiting for you to come and pick up as well when you come in and sign other documents. But more importantly, this staff here in the office, and I have to give kudos to Nancy and Diane, provided and put together a small gift vase for each of you, full of lots of nice treats and it's very kind of springy looking and sunshiny. And this is all from us to you genuinely as gratitude for the incredible work that you all do. I think most people have no idea of the hours that you all put in. It's not just these five-hour Zoom meetings that you have twice a month. Hardly a week goes by where I don't have conversations with one or all of you. You are constantly working on school district-related business. It just, it's amazing to me and I know I can speak for myself, the entire staff here and I know for countless folks in our community, even those that often have a message to send to us, what they're not happy with is I do always appreciate the fact that even when people are saying, I'm not happy about this, they often say, but I really appreciate that you're there doing this work for us because it's not glamorous and as I said, it's volunteer work. And I'm just very thankful to the five of you, proud to be part of this organization and just really hope that everyone will join me in recognizing our school board and all of our school board members across the state for the amazing work that you all do and what I think is really truly our most important institution, public education. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. Don't forget when you come to sign your board docs to pick up your certificate and your gift as well. So thank you all and happy Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you Superintendent Thiele. And I apologize, I did not catch that you had that on the agenda and you pay more attention. So I will now go to public input and the first person I see is Nate Correa. If you can show us your camera. There you are.
Thank you Suzanne and congratulations to the board on your recognition there. And just wanted to personally say to the students who spoke, very impressed with how well spoken you are and all of the thoughts you put into your comments. That was, that was pretty impressive and certainly struggling to follow you guys, so that was cool. With, for the board tonight, what I wanted to share was, I'm, some people know part of a group called the ISD Alliance for Kids and we've grown to over 1,100 members in just nine weeks. And we've got a lot of parents that are working on a lot of things to support the district, support our children, support our teachers. And one of the things we did this last few weeks was we did a lot of organic outreach to teachers in the district. These are just people we know in our networks and that we were able to reach out to, to get input from them. We wanted to know what can we do to support and advocate for teachers and we got a lot of really, really great feedback, a lot of candid feedback. And we wanted to share a little bit of that to the board. And we got a lot of different themes that came back from teachers and there was, again, very thorough, great, which we'll provide more detail to you. I'll send it over in an email to the board and superintendent. But there was one theme that rose to the top and this wasn't just from teachers. This is mirrored by a lot of parents and other stakeholders. But there was a very clear desire for, to see a very dramatic improvement to the district's communication and transparency practices. And we don't want to just present this to you as a complaint or pointing fingers or anything like that. We're very aware that the district operated without a communications director for a long, long time. We've got a new one. Thank you for fulfilling that role. And we know that they were just hired. So there's a very good understanding that that was difficult. What we'd like to suggest and present to the board is that the board in the district appoint a task force, a seven-member task force from the community made up of four parents and three teachers. And we build a communication advisory group with skill sets from the community. Folks who can help bring ideas, best practices, analysis to the table and help the district formulate a world-class communication department. So with that, we will definitely send over a more formal proposal. We've also got a list of community members who have already raised their hands to volunteer that have expertise in the area of HR, communications, marketing and other areas that would love to lend their expertise to the districts to help. And we'd love it if you would consider doing this, creating this task force, get the community involved and think of it as our way to send this message on behalf of teachers and parents, but also offer a vehicle to help support it with resources and information. So like I said, we'll email over a more formal proposal and also some of the feedback that we got from teachers and definitely keeping that very anonymous per their request, but we will gladly share all that with you and look forward to partnering with you on this so we can make our district a world-class communication organization. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you Nate. Next up, I have Ms. Weed. If you can turn on your camera. There you are.
Hello, hi, thank you so much. And thank you so much to the students who spoke. Again, I want to echo your comment that you were very well-prepared, far more well-prepared than I. And as you're, as a teacher of in Issaquah School District, I'm delighted by the people we are creating. I wanted to, sorry, I'm quite nervous. I wanted to address the board and address you, Mr. Thiele, about equity, particularly as it applies to the events of Wednesday, January 6th. And I know that that is a hot-button topic for many and I know that it makes many people uncomfortable. However, I felt that while we did eventually address Wednesday's events, the district did not address the structures of white supremacy and white privilege that were blatantly on display, nor did we condemn the overt imagery, the Confederate flag, the neo-Nazi memorabilia. And in a district that has placed a lot of value on facilitating courageous conversations among staff and equity development in the district as a whole, that statement felt like a missed opportunity. And the fact that it came so late meant that teachers felt like they were on their own to address these real events as they were happening and to talk about them and facilitate conversations with students. And we've been in, as educators, we've been in that position before. When Parkland happened, when all kinds of different hot-button world events happen, the kids bring them into the classroom with them and we are at the front of the line to mediate and facilitate those conversations. And to have the response come so late and to have it not address some of the very real things that were present and that students brought up felt disingenuous and didn't feel like we were sticking by the promises that we'd made to our community. I believe some of my colleagues tonight want to also address tech equity because equity is a really big concept. And I know that there are many different branches, but I just want to say that I know we want to empower our educators to address inequities in our world, but I feel like we aren't going far enough and that we are still treating it as an option in the classroom rather as something we need to work to confront and work through together as a community. So I don't mean this as a condemnation or as a censor or as censorious in any way. I just felt that it was a missed opportunity and that our students benefit from courageous conversations, the kinds that we have among staff members. And I'd love to see some more effort on facilitating those between our students.
Okay, thank you very much. Kristi Santa Domingo. Kristi?
She's still muted, I think.
Oh, I can't see her, so I don't.
Okay, I'm unmuted, but I can't turn on my camera.
Okay, I guess we can let you get away with that.
Can you turn on the camera for me, please?
Can I? That's an interesting question. Ask to start video.
Thank you, thank you.
There you are.
Thank you. I was, I was like shouting, so anyway, thank you. Okay, so I'm Kristi Santa Domingo and I teach at Issaquah Middle School. I teach science and I'm also an equity co-leader and I'm very thankful that you started the equity teams at schools. We have a very passionate team and I'm here to advocate for two things. First, I would like to advocate that the district provides devices for all secondary students in the fall. I also would like the school board and superintendent to make it known what you are doing to recruit, hire and retain more diversified staff. So here, I have four points on why we need to provide district laptops. So number one, it is more equitable for teachers and students. All classrooms would be able to provide the same scaffolds that teachers and students have become accustomed to during remote learning, such as immersive reader, dyslexia font, text-to-speech, verbal responses using Flipgrid and Canvas and Google Translator, just to name a few. Number two, district-provided devices for all secondary students ensure staff are able to help when issues arise, like connecting to our district Wi-Fi or simple things like having a charging cord to borrow. While bring-your-own-device model may seem enticing, it will highlight disparities of income. Having devices that are owned by the district with security software will ensure installed programs are not a distraction. Finally, it's my understanding that Lake, Washington and Bellevue School Districts offer devices to students from first grade through 12th grade. Issaquah students and teachers should also have access to the same tech tools that benefit and support student learning in neighboring districts. So the second part I'd like to advocate for is, is making known your plans for hiring, retaining and recruiting more diverse staff. I know that it's part of the executive limitations to actively seek out through promoting, recruiting and selecting, hiring practice, highly skilled staff from diverse backgrounds. And I just want to make sure that we're doing that. I know that it's hiring season now, starting now and I just want to make sure that that is happening and maybe it could be made known how. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the last hand that I have is Kaylee Byrne. There you are.
Hi, okay. Hi, I'm Kaylee Byrne and I work at Issaquah Middle and I am actually on Kristi's equity team at Issaquah Middle and it's been a week, obviously. I want to echo something that actually Ms. Weed said about last Wednesday. I am so thankful that I, at my school, have administrators that were supporting us in having these courageous conversations and helping us gather resources. But it just, it seems like a very hard thing to ask teachers who are scared to do this work to come up with their own documents and resources, literally within, I mean, we had 24 hours to figure out how we were going to teach this. And that's very hard, especially when we're trying to process it on our own too and trying to figure out how we feel about it. And then we also have to figure out what, sorry, I thought I heard something. We also have to figure out how to teach this to kids and so what I, I'm a little worried right now that with COVID, we've kind of had to start dropping some balls on other things and COVID is definitely something that we have to acknowledge, but I'm worried that we're dropping equity and that's terrifying to me because this has been a problem for forever. And yet, like, we're not, I don't, I just, I feel like we need to do more. And one way I think we could do that is if the district can support hiring teachers of color, especially black and brown teachers of color. I think we need an emergency resource team when current events happen that can gather resources and scaffold them by grade level and content area to distribute these resources for teachers so that we can be a little bit better prepared and aren't stressing about coming up with a last-minute lesson plan for major events that kids are going to talk about anyway, so we want to provide them a space to talk about it and not judge them, but also help them stick to the facts and not jump off to just random theories and ideas. So we need support with that though. That is hard and we're getting training, but it's not enough. We need more. We need a lot more. We need to be talking about you know, gender identity, racism issues, xenophobic issues, I mean, ableist issues. I mean, we're having, all of these things are happening in our schools and they're happening online and they're happening in our schools too and us getting off remote and going back into the schools isn't going to change that. So I just hope that we can start coming up with some creative ideas and recognizing that it's going to take money that is necessary to spend on this. Thank you for your time and.
You're on mute Suzanne.
Thank you Kaylee and I apologize somehow I fell off the meeting in the middle of that, but I seem to be back. And three more hands are up, so I'm going to take these three people and then I'm going to call it good because we do have a lot on the agenda. So the next person up is Mari Stevens.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi there. I also work at Issaquah Middle School as the Positive Behavioral Social Emotional Support Coach and like my colleagues before, equity is a huge focus for our building. And as someone said before, also I want to address the issue of communication. And I am also a parent of two Skyline High School kids and they have been in the school district since kindergarten. And I really think that along And I really think that along with our equity work, we also need to educate parents. I have been lucky enough to be at Issaquah Middle School for the last six years. And my growth as far as uh, equity education and the professional development and then my colleagues' constant conversation about this, we are working towards a change. And if we do not educate our community, we will get pushback. And so when I talk to community members that are my best friends, they are not necessarily doing all of this hard talk that we have been doing in our district and in our building. Um, the more the district can support, um, the parent-wise or all of the parent education, the better our work will be able to move through um, our classrooms, our schools, our kids. In our building, we definitely have people that are willing to do this work. I also would ask that the school board, instead of going outside the district for training, really look at the amazing resources we have in district. And these teachers are creating amazing lessons, amazing conversations. And the more we can educate parents about it, the more they will understand the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mari. Uh, Anthony Jackson. Anthony, are you there?
He needs to be unmuted, it looks like.
Oh, there he is. Okay, ask to unmute. Did that work?
And he's, there we go.
There we go.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, my name is Anthony Jackson. I am in eighth grade social studies, also at IMS. And I wasn't expecting to speak on the matter of technology, but having heard the discussion going around, uh, I want to share a bit of my history. I've been a, uh, I was an ed tech lead for many years. I participated in our excellent um, program where we went over Eleven Worth. Unfortunately, that's ended. And I've had classroom computers for my entire time because I participated early in that program. And I've worked previously in the Isq- in the Lake Washington School District where they've had uh, student computers, one-to-one for about 10 years now, coming to Issaquah and learning that not only do we not have computers, but it wasn't until last year during the pandemic that we had student emails. Um, I was very confused and I've been a little frustrated with that. I would hope that we would push for the one-to-one. I've been a part of several uh, pilot programs and all the words that I've heard have been, it's a ten, it's a five-year process and that we have a five-year plan. And it's been about six years of having that language being told to me. And I wish that we would push forward with that. Not only is this an equity issue, but it is good for every stu- excuse me, every student in our district to be able to have access to functioning accessible laptops with common programs and that share all of our excellent programs. Like we saw with our students who spoke before, they want to have specific programs that are helpful. I teach Office 365 constantly. We practice it all the time. When I conference with my students, I use to do, to help my students achieve what they need to achieve. On a separate note, aside from promoting the one-to-one devices, I wanted to speak on the matter of communication, especially after the Capitol last week. There is a message that came out from the district that said, "While our country is grappling with centuries of inequities and racist practices, what happened yesterday was not about equity and diversity. What happened yesterday is about a threat to our democracy and the integrity of our political process." As a social studies teacher, that made me very frustrated, especially with the fact that the complexity of our social systems and politics was being overrode by a very simplistic uh, understanding of the events. And I wish that we continue, and while there was a redacted message or an updated message the next day, it makes me fearful of the knee-jerk reaction of some communications that are unfortunately misguided because it was about equity and it was about diversity. Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Um, and then the last person um, I'm going to call on tonight is Jamie Street. And there she is.
Oh, good, it's working. Um, hello, my name is Jamie Street and I am at Issaquah Middle School as well. Um, I as well would like to advocate that the district provide devices for all secondary students in the fall. I believe one-to-one, one-to-one devices have previously been denied by the board, but I'd like to point out valid reasons why students need one-to-one devices. First, one-to-one devices is more equitable for teachers and students. All classrooms will be able to provide the same scaffolds that teachers and students have become accustomed to during remote learning, such as immersive reader, dyslexia font, text-to-speech, verbal responses using tools such as Flipgrid and Canvas, Google Translator, and that's just really to name a few. District provided devices for all secondary students ensures staff are able to help when issues arise, like connecting to our district Wi-Fi or simple things like having a charging cord to borrow. Managing the knowledge sets to support students in all types of computers is um, too much to ask of teachers. And it's also going to take away from what we're able to do in the classroom if we're always trying to figure out students' computers. What we dealt with, with just Mac computers and trying to get those to talk to Canvas and Microsoft is pretty difficult. Um, while a bring-your-own-device model may seem enticing and like a simple good idea and save money, it will definitely highlight disparis- disparities among our students and the income disparities. And having just, having devices that are owned by the district with security software will ensure installed programs are not a distraction. And furthermore, we can't control what kids go home and download and then bring to school and use that as a distraction or even show to other students. Um, we've invested in a platform called Canvas that's been quite amazing from my experience and I believe students are finding that as well. And when we go back to the classroom, whenever that might be in person, students or secondary students are still going to be asked to log into Canvas as part of our teaching tool. So if every student does not have access to a laptop, they are automatically going to be excluded from what's happening for that day. There are instances where teachers could go print things to hand to those students, but what Canvas off, also eliminates is losing papers, um, saying things have been turned in when they're not. It keeps them from having to go find where those papers are. And if students do not have their own district, um, issued device, they will not be able to participate actively in class because of um, uh, not being able to get onto Canvas if they have their own computer. Um, I'd also like to build upon what my colleagues have also said about what happened at our nation's Capitol and being able to address racial issues head-on. It still feels like we're very fearful of insulting groups of people um, instead of addressing um, truth for what it was. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a meeting management tool. The board is able to pass multiple items with one motion. All items have been reviewed by the board prior to the meeting and any board member may remove an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda if he or she so desires. Do I have a motion?
I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Um, okay, and now we move on to the regular agenda and I believe we have a change?
Uh, yes, President Weaver, I would like to request that we move the item of the annual school year calendar, I believe that's item eight on the agenda, uh, forward on the agenda, all the way up to item, uh, to make it a new item three just prior to our monitoring of NS two.
Okay, that works for me.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just go ahead and note then that I don't think we have to take a motion or a vote or anything on that. It's just.
I don't think so, if we're just rearranging. Um, and then as I'm looking at the agenda, if I forget, somebody flag me down and remind me. Um, okay, that brings us to um, the item update on reopening in-person hybrid, reopening schools to in-person hybrid learning. And um, I think our plan for this was to have the superintendent speak, take public input, and then have board discussion. So I'll go for superintendent.
Thank you, President Weaver. Yeah, I do have some remarks. And then I believe I may ask Executive Director Melish at the end too, to weigh in on a component of this. But I, I did want to note that since we last all met at our last board meeting in December, some significant developments related to the reopening, to reopening schools have occurred. Just prior to our district going on winter break, Governor, uh, Governor Inslee gave a press conference in which he introduced a new reopening schools framework, formerly referred to as the decision tree. Uh, this new framework established new Washington State Department of Health COVID-19 metrics and clearly defines youngest learners as those students that are in preschool through grade three. I'm encouraged by this new framework in that I believe it sets better metrics based on studies that have been done on actual school systems that have opened for various forms of in-person learning and may allow for quicker return of students to in-person learning. Um, if you go to TVW, can watch that governor's press conference, I think it was, um, and you can download the documents that show the studies that he was referring to as well. Another unfortunate development um, that has occurred in that timeframe is that the Department of Health has not been consistently updating our county's COVID-19 positive test rates since we reached an agreement with our teachers' union, the Issaquah Education Association, to use this metric for our phased-in return of our K3 students. This has been very disappointing as both sides worked hard on this MOU. I'll note that the MOU is still in place and it is possible that the Department of Health will start regularly updating uh, the numbers and that our county's positivity rate will drop below uh, 5% as it was between May and early November, allowing for the phased return of our K3 students. But it, it is problematic to say the least right now and been a, a big topic of discussion amongst the two sides at the bargaining table. Um, the district um, and the Issaquah Education, uh, Issaquah Education Association um, are talking about how we might uh, be able to change that current MOU to address the issue of the po- of the positivity metric. I know that the Issaquah Education um, leadership is working hard uh, to gather input from their nearly 1,300-plus members uh, through a series of focus group conversations they are holding. Um, it, it's, it's a large organization and, and the leadership is, is trying to um, gather input and um, help educate its members about some of these complicated um, issues as well. And I appreciate those efforts. Many of us are, are frustrated, frustrated by the constantly changing circumstances related to bringing students back for hybrid learning, especially um, as we see our neighboring districts announce plans for a return of their students in the coming uh, days and weeks. And um, a neighboring district or a, a close-by district, Mercer Island, has already brought back its kindergarten students. Um, I too am frustrated by this. Um, I do have hope that we'll be able to reach agreement with our unions on a phased return of our students in the coming, uh, coming days. I would, um, it would be my hope that we will be able to uh, begin our phased return of in-person learning uh, with our K1 students by the first week of February. Um, and then followed um, thereafter um, with our two, three students um, shortly thereafter in the month of February as well, with phased plans for the, our remaining students in the weeks following. I do want to stress that at this point, we do not have an agreement on this timeline that, that this, my hopeful timeline with IEA, but I remain uh, optimistic that we will be able to reach an agreement soon. We also have other real related issues um, that we continue to discuss but need to uh, be able to move off of the K3 so that we can spend some more time and energy, such as ways to support our struggling high school students through in-person academic support pods. And that conversation was just beginning before the break. And then the governor changed the, this is part of the frustration with the constantly changing things. But there was discussions and I know that there is some continued back and forth between the two parties on that, as well as the, the phased return of our four, five students. Then ultimately, our middle schoolers and, and all of our students eventually. I also wanted to touch on um, vaccines as part of this return to in-person teaching and learning, um, because that is going to be a very important component of this. And um, I know that this school board, I know that our local elected officials, um, I've been encouraging my professional organization and my colleague superintendents to all be advocating for teacher vaccination and educational staff vaccinations because I do believe it will be important for a, a return to in-person uh, learning. Also, I do want to note that the WEA uh, released a position paper um, just yesterday, I believe, or maybe the day before. Um, WA is calling for no in-person uh, services until every employee has been given access to both shots of the COVID-19 vaccine. I do want to note that that, that is not in the Washington DOH uh, return to school framework. That, that, there is no mention of the vaccine in, in that aspect as, as part of that plan. Uh, another concern that I have with that, and again, it's a big advocate for the vaccine and we'll talk more about that a little later about um, that what we hope and how we hope to, to aid in, in that. But one concern I have with that, that plan or the position paper is, depending on the vaccine, um, it's 21 to 28 days in between those shots. And I, I fear that uh, a long uh, lag of time would go by if, if we adopted that as the standard. Um, I don't disagree with the idea, but the, the, uh, the ability to roll that out. So again, having said that, I strongly support the vaccine. Um, and we are working hard to create vaccine centers to help expedite the inoculation of our employees and even the larger community as we believe this is an important form, uh, important from an overall public health standpoint. Um, I believe that school districts can be part of the vaccination solution, not just here in Issaquah, but uh, really across the country. And the reason I say that is because we have large facilities and we have freezers in those facilities. And, and while that, we may not have the types of freezers that allow us to use the Pfizer vaccine, we do for the Moderna. And if you think about it, there's just not a lot of places like that in our community. So let's take advantage of that. And then I'm so appreciative of the work of a number of our staff and Dr. Gallinger and some volunteers in our community that are working hard to um, help make those vaccine, uh, vaccine centers become a reality. We will have more information coming out on that soon to our staff. It is a, it is a rather complicated process. And again, I'm, I'm so grateful to those individuals on the staff and, and who have been working on this because uh, we, we have been approved as a center. We just have to make sure that all the logistical aspects are worked out and that we are meeting all the appropriate protocols for the administration, safe administration of the vaccine. And we will continue to uh, to, as there's more information about that, share that. Um, and then the last aspect of, of the reopening that I did want to touch on a little bit here tonight, um, and I wanted to give Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Rich Melish an opportunity to talk about efforts that are occurring to identify learning loss um, among students during this pandemic. And um, the strategies that are being planned to address this loss as we move forward and as we bring students back for in-person learning. I do want to thank our students and those um, in the community, and those community members who completed the engagement survey, giving us this important information. Um, and I know that um, Executive Director Melish will talk a little bit about that. So Rich, could you kind of update the community and the board a little bit on some of our, uh, what we've learned and kind of what our thinking is?
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent Thiele. So I'll start with um, some of the listening and, and studying of the engagement survey that we completed. And we do plan on posting those uh, within tomorrow or Monday on our webpage. So, uh, so that our community can see the uh, results of the engagement survey. Uh, when it comes to looking at the reopening of schools, uh, looking at the family survey, we did notice that uh, families, the area that was probably the greatest need that families indicated on the survey was uh, the, uh, social emotional needs are not being met um, in remote learning at the rate that they would like to see. So uh, that is definitely factoring into our plans, especially as we begin with the youngest and how we will need to uh, reintroduce our, our first graders who had less than a full year of school and our kindergartners who have yet to be part of a school. and our kindergartners who have yet to be part of a school day. So we know that social emotional learning experience is going to be really critical to reentry for all students, and particularly for those young students that we'd be, be beginning with. The interesting to the comments from some of our teachers and community members today is one of the highlights of family feedback was that the learning management system has allowed them to access their students' progress and access their students' learning, and that that learning management system has been successful. I'd like to remind the board that we started the selection of our learning management system before COVID began. We had a committee that was almost complete when, when COVID pandemic hit, and that was one of the reasons why we were able to quickly pivot towards Canvas and our elementary learning management systems. So that was for a long-term planning, and so I'd like, love to say that, and I think I can confidently say that Canvas is not going away, that we have purchased that and plan to continue to use that in a, for the long term. And we are finding it to be a very valuable tool, and we will continue to support it and integrate it into our practices. And I think as we reopen schools, the use of CSO, the use of Canvas and Clever and these learning management tools that we have will continue to be critical as we partner with parents to, to identify and address learning loss and to keep students up on their learning. With the, with the other parts of the survey, we really started looking at ways that we can use, the best use our in-person time. So if we're in a hybrid situation, I know my elementary team and teaching and learning services, our instructional coaches, we've been listening to, doing listening sessions with our K-one teachers, and we'll continue to start listening to our two, three teachers soon to really identify what are the questions they have about how to best reopen schools and within the safety protocols to really do high-leverage practices, to really make learning the rich experience that we have always attained when we've had in-person schooling. So we are, we're working on giving resources and direction to teachers on how to be able to make that a really rich learning experience for students, how to best use the in-person time, and then how to make sure that when they do the remote learning part, that we complete that loop when they get back into the in-person, so that it's really a cohesive whole experience over the hybrid experience. And particularly in there, we heard in the student survey that how important it is to have access to getting help with, when they have questions, and so really using that in-person time to get, get that personal help, identify those questions that they have and address, address the need they have for help. Like to switch, switch over, you could go, there are a lot more things that we could learn from listening to our teachers and the engagement survey, but we've been doing a lot of work to really think about how we identify and address learning loss during this time. And it really is linked to the work that we are doing around academic interventions in the, in the long term as well. And I'll, I'll put those in just a couple of categories, and I'll keep it a very high level at this time, and if you have questions, I'm happy to go into more detail. The biggest piece that we've been looking at is, in order to address learning loss, we have to identify it. So throughout, particularly in the literacy and math areas, those core skills, we have made sure that we have strong assessments throughout the grade levels to be able to identify not only overall achievement and whether they're keeping up with the expectations, but really diagnostic assessments that will help us identify what strengths and what challenges they're having with attaining the core learning they need to be successful in their next steps. So we feel very confident that we are developing an assessment system that will help us to monitor now and into the years to come the learning loss and the learning strengths of our students. We are currently administering some elementary assessments, mid-year assessments, that will give us a real strong sense where students are in both math and literacy. The adaptive, we have been also working a lot with adaptive learning supports. So these are technology tools that allow students to engage in, in learning independently and have an adaptive response, so it automatically adjusts to students' correct and incorrect responses. I Ready Reading, I Ready Reading, I Ready Math, Lexia, Alex Math, and Savas. We have these programs in math and ELA, No Write Inc. These are all programs that are designed to help us identify where students need reinforcement, but it automatically assigns work to them and helps us monitor and, and give them kind of just-in-time instruction. Many of them also give suggestions to the teacher of things that they can be doing in small group or instruction in the classroom with students and with student groups. We are currently exploring, continuing to explore, and in many cases, continuing to provide extended learning opportunities. So after-school academic programs have begun in many of our schools to offer additional supports after school, those are remote at this point. And we are beginning the conversation of looking at what extended summer learning opportunities could look like this coming summer to help students to be better prepared for next year. We continue to be working with Executive Director Hood around the question of credit recovery and re-engagement strategies for next year and ways that we can leverage Canvas and leverage what we've learned about remote learning so that we can offer both live and online opportunities for students who may have not received all the credits they need to stay on track for graduation. So between the extended learning activities, the adaptive learning supports, and continuing to build our intervention programs, and the assessments and monitoring of student achievement, I think we're well-positioned as we return to in-person learning to monitor and identify learning loss and to have strategies to address those, those learning loss, those learning losses. We go into a lot more into the specifics of the assessments and the instruction and that the instructional tools that we are exploring and expanding and have provided. But I will, I will save the details in case there's questions or for another deeper report at another time.
Great. Thank you, Rich. I really appreciate the work that you and your team are doing. And I know that we probably have a lot of public input, so just appreciate all those efforts. So thank you. So that's all I had then, President Weaver.
Okay, so we will go to public input. I am going to limit public input to a half an hour, and I am going to be much more of a stickler than I was on the first round in terms of the two minutes. So. Oh, that can't be all the hands. Okay, well, we'll start there anyway. We'll see what happens. If you do have public input to give, please raise your hand in the box. And the first person I have is Nora. So.
Hi, that's my daughter's name. I'm Catherine Hawken. I emailed all of you. I'm so glad we're talking about equity. And I know Seattle, you know, had a lot to say about equity this spring and this summer, and I know that Superintendent Thiely said that, that remote learning, when he decided to make it all remote, would be inequitable. And I'm here to say that it is inequitable. That aside from having my four young children to educate, kindergarten first, fourth, and sixth, I also have other children come to my home. One of these children lives in a shelter, in a women's shelter since, since, for the past several months. This child, when, started coming to my home, because you can't be left unattended at the shelter, and this is a middle school child, and we don't have anywhere for this child to go. And when this child came, the child was doing, fourth, had fallen so far behind that was doing fourth grade math. So every day, aside from educating other children, we are spending hours and hours catching up to get up to a sixth grade level without any remedial program. And we, the child hadn't read a book in a year. The child, in October, when the child started coming, didn't know how to access any of the online textbooks, had never accessed online social studies, online math, anything. And so I'm seeing firsthand the inequality and firsthand how much the edge, how huge the education gap is for my kids who are privileged and have me here to other kids. And I'm not just talking about this one student, I'm talking about the hundreds and hundreds of other students in the school district. And I please thank Dr. Gallinger for working on getting a vaccine here, and I truly hope that we can get my middle, the, not just elementary, but the middle and high school kids, because this kid is, he's lost, and we're exhausted and we're breaking, and this is just too taxing for all of us. So please do the right thing and get these kids in school as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate it. Kimberly Brown. Do I need, no, you unmuted yourself. Good.
That's a tough one to follow. My name is Kimberly Brown, and I have students at Isiqua Valley in Apollo. What I'm about to say echoes much of Superintendent Thiely's comments, but while I can simply make a public comment, Superintendent Thiely, you as the leader of this school district have the ability to take action, and I implore you to do it. I'll be honest, I'm tired, and sometimes I'm not really sure what else there is to say, but I will not stop advocating for my kids and so many kids in this district that need to return to buildings. We are 307 days in counting since these kids set foot in a classroom. Our district administrators have provided town halls and board presentations indicating that they can meet the legal requirements for safety outlined by the Department of Health and Labor and Industries. The science supports reopening, and almost a month ago, we got revised guidelines from the state that says our pre-K through fifth graders should be in the classroom now, today. Referring to the positivity rate, the current K-3 MOU states, quote here, "The parties will reevaluate the trigger if the DOH decision tree is updated," end quote. So please explain why nearly a month later, it has not been revised and agreed upon. Neighboring districts have announced reopening plans for their youngest learners. Mercer Island has kindergartners in school with additional grades to follow, and yet here in Isiqua, we're becoming an island with no agreed plan and no dates. In the last day or two, the narrative in the media has turned to moving teachers and staff up the priority list for vaccines. I so fully support this that on October 15th, when the Department of Health issued a survey asking the community how Washington should prioritize the vaccine, and I not only filled it out and said teachers should be in phase one, I posted it on my personal Facebook page and asked all my friends to do the same. I'm hopeful ISD's role as a vaccination site will accelerate access for employees when the state says it's their turn. But if this school board and district is going to move the goalposts and wait to open after vaccinations are complete, I'm asking that we set a date for all grades, preschool through seniors, to return to buildings two weeks after ISD offers the clinics for the second shot. That being said, the vaccine doesn't change the fact that the current science, absent a vaccine, tells us that school buildings are safe with proper mitigation. The current guidance tells us that our pre-K through fifth graders should be in buildings now. We cannot stop advocating for our students who have been out of the classroom for 307 days while we wait for vaccine prioritizations to change and clinics to emerge. We need to open our schools now based on the state guidance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tiffany Adams. Tiffany? Oh, I heard something. Oh, there she is. Need to unmute?
Okay. My name's Abby Adams, and I go to Sunny Hills Elementary School. I'm in fourth grade. It gives me anxiety seeing so many activities on CSO. And there's really glitchy internet when we're doing Zoom call. And it's hard to learn on a screen because you don't get some, you won't, sometimes you won't be able to say, because sometimes you're. My brother's in first grade, and he's having lots of troubles since his ADHD, and he can't focus. He's been really struggling with school. Let us go back to school.
Thank you. That was my daughter. She really wanted to use her own voice. I'm, I'm her mom, Tiffany Adams. I have a fourth grader at Sunny Hills and a first grader at Sunny Hills. And my friend Catherine just spoke on the inequity, and yeah, like, we have a lot of privilege, and even with our privilege, our kids are struggling, even with all of the resources that we're trying to pull together. And we, I just want to echo what the two previous parents have said. We need to get our kids into school, not just up to third grade. My daughter's in the fourth grade, and she struggles. Kids don't have their cameras on, so they're not getting that. Even, even in fourth grade, kids are tuning out. My kids have never suffered with anxiety, and both of them, before coming back to school after winter break, they both like, both had like breakdowns, crying, multiple crying breakdowns about school this year. And education isn't something they should be anxious about. It should be something they're excited about and want to love. And I'm just really disheartened by this year that I hope that this experience throughout the pandemic doesn't curb their learning and make their enthusiasm for learning go down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Ferrante. Ferrante, sorry. Jessica, are you there? Yes, you are.
All right. My name is Jessica Ferrante. I'm a parent of a seventh grader at Beaver Lake and a fifth grader at Challenger, and I'm also a fifth grade teacher at Apollo. I didn't really want to speak for or against the reopening, but just with a concern about the K-through-five survey that came out last week, and that the results may not accurately reflect what our elementary families prefer about virtual versus hybrid learning for two reasons. One, the lack of time that we had to respond, and two, the asymmetric structure of the survey itself. Like many fourth and fifth grade parents and teachers, I was stunned by the email last Monday. We had no indication that we would be receiving a message that day, nor that we would have a mere 72 hours to respond to it. The first week back from winter break is always really busy and stressful for families, getting everyone back in their routine, and adding this monumental decision to it meant that parents did not have enough time to give it the consideration that it required. Families in special programs like Science Tech and Merlin had even less time as they were sent a two-page letter listing about nine possible scenarios, with fewer than 24 hours remaining to make their selection. My second concern is that the survey offered a hidden and asymmetric choice where parents who had hybrid, who chose hybrid, had a follow-up option to remain with the teacher virtually, if that's how the teacher was assigned. But parents who chose virtual didn't have any follow-up at all. Over two-thirds of the families in my fifth grade class actually preferred virtual first with hybrid with me as a backup, if that was my assignment. Unfortunately, the district survey didn't give them that option. Given that their top priority was to keep their kids in my Merlin class, many were considering choosing hybrid anyway. And so you can see that this would have the potential of making it seem as though my class overwhelmingly preferred hybrid, when in fact, they preferred the opposite. I found that concerning, and so I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, because I think since these results are supposed to help determine teacher assignments, that we want to make sure that they're accurately reflecting what our families prefer. So I hope that the district would consider sending out a symmetric survey and allow ample time for families to ask questions and weigh their options in order to get the best data so that we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. And my last person is Malia, no last name. Malia? Okay, do I need to unmute you? Okay. I think you're unmuted.
Okay, hi there. I actually hadn't planned on talking tonight. I just came here to observe, and I I just feel like I need to be a voice.
Malia, can you give us your phone name, please?
Oh, sure. Malia Wilkinson. My daughter is in IHS in 11th grade. And I feel like week after week, we sort of hear the ongoing discussion about in schools and out of schools, and I want my kids in and safe return, and I, I just want to say that I truly believe each and every one of us wants our kids back in school. I don't think that's a unique platform. I think everybody wants the kids back in school. But I think, talking about that week after week, when we can't change the numbers, we as parents, the, the MOUs are being discussed, and when that's done, then maybe there's something to discuss. But until then, I'm saddened that we don't discuss what we can do right now for our kids. There's so much we could have been doing since the fall. I know in the beginning, we talked about homework. I mean, that just got dropped, and homework's been awful. It's too much, too many hours on the computer. And I know Marnie discussed it way back when in one meeting, and then it just never came back to discussion. Today, we found out in high school that kids can have no credit if they're failing. It's one day before the end of the term. You want to talk about mental health, that could have been so instrumental to so many kids that they had known it a month ago. And they could have said, okay, I'm not going to worry about this one class. I'm going to put all my energy into these ones that I can focus on. And that would have been huge for our kids. And that would have been huge for our kids. And I just think it's a shame that week after week, the voices we hear are voices who seem to think they're unique and that they want the kids back. When in fact, we all do want our kids back. We just need to find ways to make the current situation as palatable as we can until we can get to a place in which we can all get back in, which is what we all want. I mean, social stuff, let's, you know, let's talk about the minute numbers drop. Let's use the gymnasiums and get some of the groups in, the clubs in. That's a great way to get social interaction. I mean, let's say, okay, you know, every day, these are the blocks, we're going to block it off. You need to get a couple of parents or whatever it is. But let's find ways and to stop talking about the same thing every single board meeting. And instead, let's do some action. Let's do things to make the situation better. I mean, I, but we've got smart parents and teachers. Their teachers doing amazing things in their classrooms, bringing in authors, all kinds of things that could have been done district-wide. There could have been amazing platforms that you presented to our children to engage them and excite them. All right. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. And I hadn't planned on saying, I didn't do my makeup, but I had to say something.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your input. Marina Subaya?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you.
It says stop video, so I, can you turn the video on?
No, all mine says is stop video too. I don't, whoops. I'm sorry. That, that didn't work. I'm not going to hit that button again, I promise.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, my video is nothing to add. I'm outside and my power's still out. So also wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but just wanted to really join a lot of voices we've heard. The, the recommendations from the governor changed a month ago. I know it was government and Department of Health, excuse me. And those recommendations would have, or well, like a lot of recommendations we see changing. If we had applied them back in September, K through twelve would have been in. The Mercer Island has started and the study with early release from the American Academy of Pediatrics and Duke University from just a few days ago, studied, I think it was over ninety thousand staff and students over schools in North Carolina, I'm going from memory here, over nine weeks of various amounts of in-person learning, found zero confirmed child to adult transmission, zero, and very limited transmission elsewhere in schools. Really, I just feel like the numbers and the science is all supporting schools going back. Elementary school going back now. If we stay, you know, our numbers are kind of fluctuating in the stall after Christmas. But if we stay under three hundred and fifty, K through eight, and the limiting factor is going to be getting kids back in the classroom to get high schools restarted because that, those guidance of getting under two hundred thousand cases per one hundred K is likely in the near future. Once our numbers start to drop again. So there, there is science to support going, going back. There's so much data to support it. It's amazing that ISD became a vaccination center, vaccination site. I don't know of any other school district that's doing that. I've said before, I will volunteer to help with that effort in any way I can. And let's, and to circle back again to comments we've heard through across the different areas tonight is the just communication about it all. Please communicate with all parts of, you know, teachers and staff and families. Like none of us really know what's going on, even if the communication has just continued. Here's what we have. It's incomplete.
Last two minutes, if you could wrap.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Didn't mean to cut you off that much and I hope you get your power.
Thank you. Me too.
And the last, the last speaker we're going to take is Caitlin Schreiber. Saw you there a minute ago.
Yeah, sorry. My lights are going off and on too. I have no, have no internet or power. Thanks so much for the chance to speak and for having this board meeting tonight. I just wanted to say a number that I've been thinking about a lot and it's already been mentioned today, but the number is three hundred and seven. It's been three hundred and seven days since our children have been out of school. That's a really long time. We are almost to a year. On March thirteenth, it will be a year, a year since our kids have been in school. And there've been so many suggestions and ideas, ways that we can create small little pockets for our kids to get social emotional help. That's a lamp flickering. Ways for us to do things half measures. I've even said at the beginning of the year that my, I'm really sorry, there's a ghost in my room. I even said at the beginning of the year, if high schoolers could even have one, one hour a week of time with other students, it would make a huge difference. And that still hasn't happened compared to many districts across the country. We have no ability for our children to even open the door of their schoolroom to go inside. So I'm going to say that one more time. Spend three hundred and seven days. Our kindergartners have not walked inside of school.
Oh, I think the ghost got her.
She may have closed up, President Weaver.
Yeah, I think that might be it for public input. Thank you, Caitlin. I do think we got the message of what you were trying to say. And I am now going to turn this over to the board for discussion. Marnie?
I wanted to make a motion. I move the board amend the regular agenda and include action may be taken for agenda item one, update on reopening schools to in-person hybrid learning.
Is there a second to Marnie's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to, oh, sorry, I thought my screen went away there for a minute. We have a motion to amend the agenda to allow for possible board action. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, motion passes. So we-
And it requires two, two-thirds to pass, so it-
Yes.
Just want to specify that for the public.
Okay, thank you. So we do now have the possibility of board action. Is there any further discussion? Questions, comments? Don't all jump at once. Harla?
I just want to first reflect on the part that Rich Melish talked about regarding the engagement survey. And I hope that the plan is for there to be an actual formal conversation about this. But I do want to reflect on that. And when I look at at least the summary that was sent to us for the student remote learning engagement survey, that the bottom three items were, so this is what students were not comfortable with or not, whatever is, I am comfortable asking my teacher for help. I feel good about asking my teacher for help. And we know that's a struggle that our kids are having in the remote setting. I am learning a lot this year. I am learning well during remote learning. So those are the three things that our students have said are at the bottom of their, of what they're reporting and how it's going. When I look at the secondary, it says I am effectively able to effectively learn in. And science is near the very bottom, one point six percent. We know that we are, we are contributing to learning gaps and we've got to get through those. So my request is, is that there is a conversation about this data. And of course, we'll request for it to be disaggregated by building. And by all the ways that we would normally have it disaggregated.
Dr. Gallinger, I will note too, that when we post it, it will be posted by building. And there's actually two surveys for each building. There's the student survey and the parent survey. And I, I agree. I think we need, there's a lot of good information in there. We do need to spend some more time with it. I would encourage that as well.
Yeah.
I do think that before you post it publicly, our teachers and staff deserve a chance to hear from the district and to see this information so that it's not, doesn't come across as a blind sighting. Because this should be crushing to all of us to hear directly from our students. And that's not the point. This isn't a gotcha.
Right.
But it's really like, hey, to what we've heard from our staff and our, and our parents, can we stop talking about COVID and start talking about recovery? I think this is the first step.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, it was alarming to look at that survey and say, where it says I'm able to effectively learn in and social studies and science were like under two percent. So I don't understand, you know, what the issue is specifically with those two content areas. Math was also very bad at ten percent. At least with English Language Arts, it was almost sixty percent. So I, I really question the information there. And same thing with world language. Incredibly low number felt they could have effectively learned.
Well, I think they had to choose just one topic, so.
What was that?
I think they had to choose out of a hundred percent. So I think they had to choose out of one. So what was the one, one you could learn the best at? So it wasn't.
It wasn't ranking each of them.
Right.
Okay, that makes more sense. Cause I just didn't understand how it could.
But the point, the gap between language arts and, and science is, is my-
Tremendous.
Anything else?
Yeah.
So, so maybe just to put a fine point on that one for me, because I, I had pause and I have questions on just this. So do we schedule this as a whole separate, a whole separate conversation? So I can, I guess mentally put it to bed because I feel quite distracted on this topic tonight.
My inclination would be to do that to make it an agenda item perhaps at our next meeting.
Okay.
If that suits the board.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring it up because it was brought up during the-
I was like.
Right, no, no, no. And I take your point and it is something that I think we need a deeper dive into. But it's, it's a little bit separate from this agenda item. So I think I'd rather give it its own, its own home, hopefully at our next meeting, if we can make that happen.
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm sure we can, President Weaver. We will accommodate you and however you need us to. I actually think that's a great idea. I do agree that this, this is important and it needs more time. We also, I did want to inject it into tonight's conversation as well because we do have it. And I know that people know that we have this data, that we've been using this data. I know Executive Director Melish actually even did an interview with the Seattle Times, talking about some of these issues and not specific to that, to the, the level of specificity that Dr. Gallinger was just talking about there. But, and I wish I could tell you that I was surprised by what I saw in the results of the survey, but I wasn't sadly.
Okay, so we will make sure that gets a deeper dive. Okay, so back to reopening schools.
So I mean, I can, I can start. I, I suppose my- Is that okay? I don't know.
That'd be good.
I'm not using the hand thing. Yeah, I guess I would just say I'm, I am deeply unsatisfied at the moment of the lack of specificity. I think that we, we have and should be much more clear and specific on the return plan. That's the conversation I would like to have tonight. I think if you look at the new revised decision tree, that we need to just anchor to that and move forward as our, as our new guidepost. And I think we can just get to a level of specificity tonight is, is what I think would be a satisfying conclusion to the conversation.
Well, I agree that there are not enough specifics about our actual return to school. And I think we need to move into, in a direction that creates those specifics. We do have the new framework from the Department of Health that gives us very clear directive on the metrics that will allow us to get to, back into school, starting with our youngest learners, which are those K three, moving all the way up through our high school, you know, secondary students. So I'd like us to move towards, you know, very specific dates to target to get our kids back into school.
Marnie?
No, I would agree with that. So from my viewpoint, back at the beginning of September, when school started, we made the decision that we would do, actually back, back, I think it was in July, we said we would do remote. In September, when numbers were low, where we wanted to initiate getting students back in school. And within three weeks of the start of school, maybe four, if you push it, I think we were hoping for three. But by the end of September, we had our highly impacted special needs kids in the school building and they've been there ever since and our preschool kids. They're going to school. They didn't go to school part of this week because of power outages, but we have students, we have teachers in our classrooms. The assumption by this board was that, okay, we'll start there. And once we've established all of this information, trying to keep those teachers that are in classrooms safe, it should domino from there. And here we are, mid-January, and we haven't gotten any more kids other than our transitional K kids, which are brand new. We've never had it before, so in they go, kind of a preschool, so they fall under that. We haven't had any more students added to our in-person learning. And they've fallen farther and farther behind. And I have to agree with the speaker, Malia Wilkinson. I'm tired about talking about this every single meeting and not getting anywhere. I'm, I, I don't understand it. And we as a board have said time and time again, we'll look at the decision tree. The decision tree was clear in September that our youngest learners should have been back in school, but there was balking about what was youngest learners. So we had to come back and define youngest learners. Now the decision tree has opened up again. It has probably, it has provided that specificity of what it considers, kids that should be back in school during a high rate of this infection, so a high infection rate. And it was even broader than what we had talked about. And yet, there's still no movement towards getting kids back in school. Now, I understand that it takes time. It takes time to do all the things and I, I want to give our administrators the time, but I want to say, draw a line in the sand. Our kids, our youngest learners should be back in school. And we've been really clear about that. So for me, I'm ready to set some dates. I want to give the time to make sure that we've got students going where they need to be. And I know it was a little confusing with the survey that went out. But frankly, if you told us you wanted to be remote, we didn't ask you about what your teacher wanted because it wouldn't matter. That's why the question was only asked for those that said hybrid. Yeah, I want to go hybrid, but if my teacher's going remote, then I want to stay remote. But if you say, I want to go remote and your teacher's going hybrid, you wanted to stay remote. So I understand why the district did that. And so I think that the data is fine and we can move forward. And I know our principals will be calling people or answering their phones. And if you made a decision, that's not what you want. It wasn't a lockbox lockdown in, in, in writing. You didn't write that, you're signed in blood. This is what I'm going to do. So we'll be flexible, but we need to establish all of that. That's going to take some time. Getting the bus routes for those kids that, once we determine who's coming back and what that schedule is going to look like, getting the bus route. So there's some logistical things that I don't think can happen right away. And I think it would take some time. And I think I said that at the last time that we met, that it's probably like three weeks to get all that stuff in order. So I'd like to be able to provide specific dates. And I think we need to be really clear that here's when we start and we're going to move forward. And we're not just going to bring back one grade or one or two grades. We're going to start working on getting our kids back in accordance with the decision tree. And I don't think it's that hard. And I don't know why it has been so hard.
And we've established all of the safety protocols, the social distancing, the mask wearing. And we've established all of the safety protocols, the social distancing, the mask wearing, all of the the things designed to keep students and staff safe. Those are in place. Those are in the MOU. And really, the only thing that's changed is the metric in the MOU. One, isn't being monitored anymore, so that's problematic. And two, that decision tree has changed. So the whole metric changes. Nothing else has changed. So that's where we should be going from.
And the decision tree is clear. If we are seeing rates going up, that we don't put kids in school. And and it clearly states that. So I think that we have really good guidance from public health on the direction that we should be going. And I think that we should start establishing the idea that, okay, let us assume that rates stays the same and set a date. And if it, if rates are going up, then we're going to abide by the decision tree. But by this day, we want to be back in school.
Well, and that that is where we should be going, picking a date, going with the trends going down. And if they don't continue to go down or stay flat, then we can take additional action. I do have, I I don't know if Harlan wants to chime in on this part. Once we've had a chance, I do have a a draft of a motion I'd like to make that we can then fiddle around with to see if it meets where we want to go.
Harlan, anything? I can't see him. There he is.
I have lots of things to say. I don't know necessarily about this topic. I think I've I've spoken over the past now, it's probably six months of of my frustration. And I'll say it again tonight, that I believe that both this district, its leadership team, as well as IEA and its leadership team need to demonstrate to the community a shared commitment and vision to serve kids. And I will not see that as authentic shared commitment until I see daily dialogue, until we get to a solution. Right now, we have been given different guidance. See the guidance that we asked for and that Marty and I have been meeting with folks for now seven months on this. And our resolution anchored itself on the decision tree initially. And so we were very clear that we were going to follow the state guidance. And that's where the five percent positivity rate ever came up with in the first place. So we're not asking for something different than what the state guidance. But I think that's really important. And I'm not seeing that shared commitment for our kids on either side. And I'll just call it out. It's a discipline for me, and I'm asking both parties. I mean, every day, every hour, until you get to a place where we come to an agreement for kids. I do want to say that in the month of January, there was increasing case rates and returning to school, while I absolutely agree with with Director Meraldo that we're in a place where we could open following the current new framework. That it's no longer even just about the science and the data. It's also about crisis of confidence. And, you know, part of that is, is we have to prove to our community and our staff that regardless of what DOH and the state is saying from a safety standpoint, that it truly is something where we can mitigate this risk. So I don't believe that watching the trends, that returning in the first couple of weeks of January would have been the wisest decision, even in the whole month of January. So I'm here saying that for the whole community here, while we were hearing from our superintendent who was saying, hey, I want to get kids back in, I want to get kids back in. He was hearing from me wearing my daytime hat, work hat. Hey, I I really think that this isn't the best time to be going in as we were still peaking in that post-holiday period. So I want to make sure the the community understands that, that it's not just, it's not uniform. And and he has five bosses for him. But I want people to know that it wasn't a uniform, like get us into the buildings in the month of January. And and so everyone is very clear that I don't believe and didn't believe and still don't believe that we should should have brought kids in at this point, given where we are. Now, if you look at the past week, we certainly are starting to what looks like to be a clear trend downward. We, Mara, will be at our twenty-one days after Christmas, and that will give us a good sense on where we are. And so I think that if that trend continues, then that's great. But when I look at U Dub as well as our health system hospitalizations, we're really just kind of flat. And that's good. And then we're not going up to become Southern California. But we certainly aren't doing this, which is what we all had expected it to be at this point. So I want to stand firm and say that I appreciate where we are right now. But I do believe that we have work to go to move forward. And I don't want it to be where this is something that's dictated by the district or by the board. I really want this truly to be a collaborative partnership with IEA and the district leadership. And I think they can get there. But that means they have to talk more than once a week, twice a week. Because I know if I'm working on a major complex project, I can't do it just once or twice a week and then expect to if the project turned in.
I think Harlan made a really important point, which is, well, okay, first off, there's a lot of moving pieces. There's the decision tree, which isn't moving right now. There's all the things operationally we have to do to get kids into school. And there's what the virus is doing. Now, we know operationally what we have to do to get kids into school. We don't know what the virus is doing. So really, the best that we can do is set a date. And and it has to be like two to three weeks from when you start the process. We started the process right after the holidays with the student survey and say, okay, here's our target date. But the community does need to understand that it's just that, it's a target. And it depends, if COVID rates are coming down, then we're good and we can go for the target. But if the virus starts doing something we're not expecting, or, you know, or the numbers go in the wrong direction, we're going to have to push that target. So because I know coming out of the holidays, as much as I really, really want to get kids in school, I wasn't feeling good about, you know, oh, let's do it now when hospitals are full and everybody's getting sick. That didn't feel good. But if we can get to a place and we think we're seeing it somewhere in the future where these rates are coming down, we have to start acting now, or we're going to wait until the rates come down. And then, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, but it's going to take us three weeks. So that's that's the difficulty in in managing all these, it's like lack of mold. I don't know how else to say it. But I think we have to start, or we're never going to get there. Sydney, then Harlan, then Anne.
Yeah, and I think you're, I think you're on to a good, I guess, for me, a good glide path of like variable reduction, right? We've been in a period of time with just an incredible number of variables. The direction that the virus would go, the potential and and now reality of having vaccination available. There's just been a number, the multiple holidays we were traversing and and decision making that we can't control throughout that. And so I think what's good about the position we we are in now, the decision tree changes. So I think where we are today is more more known than we've had in a very long time. Obviously, we don't have complete clarity on where everything will go. But to have the revised guidance, to have clarity on, you know, the existence of vaccines, let alone the ability in potentially the near future in distributing those and the updated decision tree. And Harlan, to your point about knowing what our real situation would be of the of the virus in our environment, I think that, I think that all those things kind of come together and saying, we we can be more clear. I, you know, I also think there's been a lot of date setting around us, which people seem fascinated by. But we've also seen all those dates move and go around and and not be firm. And so I actually feel very good about us taking a more, from my perspective, a disciplined approach to looking at what the variables are and working through them being eliminated. So I, again, I think, I don't know if there's other commentary, but Anne, I liked your approach, which is what do we put on the table and start to iterate a bit on? There might be other comments, but I was just saying I agreed with that.
Yeah, I think Harlan had a comment, and then I'm going to go back to Anne.
Yeah, you know, I think that I'm able to provide our superintendent and the board just real-time data on where it is and how it's impacting health systems and hospitalizations. And, you know, a week to ten days ago, we just really didn't know which way that our state was going to trend. I mean, it was literally where we were teetering. And, you know, the things that, just to be consistent on what I've said, is one, I don't believe that opening our elementary schools to early learners is going to contribute to significant illness or hospitalization for children or staff that would participate, given the safety measures involved and given what we know about the difficulty in acquisition and transmission of the virus in in young children. And that still remains the case. But the second thing that I I said that had to be is that I didn't want us to open schools and how that contributes to this community transmission. And I wasn't confident in the second one in the month of January. Like, we are in the peak, and our peak in the third wave, remember, is, I don't know, ten times higher than the spring peak. So it's it's not even in the same category. While I've expressed my frustration with the district leadership and IEA, I I want to now give, sort of give kudos. They have been amazing partners as we've worked towards vaccination opportunity. And I do believe that we're the only district in the state that went through the process, and we started that in early December. And excited that we are really close to to that. We've submitted our requests for the first vaccine doses even. So we're really excited about that. And while I don't believe that a vaccine is necessary to return to school for our earliest learners, I do believe it needs to be the foundation when we're thinking about any secondary secondary students. And I believe that the sooner we do that, the better. So if my my hat goes off to our superintendent and his team for partnering to provide this opportunity for our educators and our community.
Well, I was going to bring up the vaccine, but Harlan just talked about that. I think that is an important piece that will overlay as we're following the education framework and moving our youngest learners back into school. That by the time we're moving into the the secondary level, we'll have much more of our staff vaccinated. So I think that that'll be an excellent thing that's going to kind of cross paths as we're bringing kids back into school. An important step.
And I will say, just where my sights at, the Moderna vaccine, which is what we've requested, is different than the Pfizer vaccine in that a single dose of Moderna has an eighty percent efficacy compared to the single dose of Pfizer has a fifty percent efficacy. So I'm not advocating for a single-dose process. But what it does tell you is this is the efficacy curve prior to giving that second dose is much higher and stronger. Then I would feel comfortable that even within three weeks of their first dose, as far as the the safety profile of returning, rather than waiting for blank number of weeks after the second dose. So.
Okay, would you guys like me to?
I was just going to quickly say that I had heard a great analogy from Brian Gianni Upton from Mercer Island School Board, talking about all of these mitigation factors are like layers of Swiss cheese. And the more you layer on, the more protection there is. Each little one isn't perfect on its own, but it's when you layer them together. So when we continue to look at social distancing, the cleansing of the rooms, the wearing of masks, the other, the six feet, you know, and all the other mitigations, as we add these mitigations, they become safer and safer. So I think one of the things I want to make sure that the public knows is, we do care about the safety of your students, the safety of our staff, and we can't do school without either one of them. And so this is not about just getting kids back to school and hitting a date. We are looking at all of those things. And that's why I wanted to reiterate, we have teachers in the building right now. And we take all of those protos and students, and we take those protocols very, very seriously, and that's not going to change. But yes, I will entertain a motion.
Okay.
I guess it's Suzanne that gets to do that.
I'm not, I'm good with entertaining a motion.
Okay, and because we're doing this motion on the fly, I'm going to suggest that I share my screen and put it up so that you can read the words instead of just hear me say them. And then we can make adjustments. Would that be okay?
That would be great, because I was poised to like write it all down, so.
Right. And and again, this is, you know, I'm going to throw this motion out there, but we can take certainly friendly amendments because that way we can adjust it to be what is, maybe what works the best for the group. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. I think. There it is. And then I'll read the motion. Can you all see my screen, Suzanne?
I can, yes.
Okay. So I move the Esquas School District in recognition of the December sixteenth Washington State Department of Health K twelve Education Framework, target the return of K one to in-person hybrid on February fourth and second to third grade on February twenty-fifth, with remaining grades as soon as possible thereafter. Assuming the COVID nineteen hospitalization trends are flat or decreasing. As access is increased to COVID nineteen vaccines, the board expects additional educational opportunities to be provided to all K twelve students.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Anne, do you want to speak to your motion?
Well, I believe, as we've talked about, that as we have gotten this new framework around K twelve education, that talks about case rates, positivity, trends, that as we are meeting those, that we should be targeting right now to be moving this first group of kids, additional group of kids, because we do already have kids in school. But having our K one return in an in-person hybrid format by February fourth. And then that gives us three weeks or the twenty-one days to then bring in our second and third. All the while, additional, I would, additional details will have to be worked out by the district to start bringing in fourth through fifth and sixth through eighth and the rest of the secondary. Because there'll be some differences in the way those kids come back and the type of schedule they have. But I believe we should be putting down target dates that we get that first group back in.
Okay, is there other board discussion? And I can't see all of you, so that would be difficult.
I have a couple.
Oh, yeah, now I can see you. Okay, Sydney.
So I'm going to certainly come back to the specific dates in a second. But I guess the first thing that jumped out at me, it's a great start, so thank you for doing that. The first thing that jumped out at me was the, after the second day, after the twenty-fifth, this is the remaining grades as soon as possible thereafter. But the the assuming the COVID nineteen hospitalization trends are flat and decreasing, I guess I may be rather tie it more directly back to the to the decision tree factors or some way versus specifically calling out hospitalization trends, since hospitalization is just one, one component of what's in the, in the decision tree. So I I know you're talking about it in the beginning, but maybe somehow to, assuming we're still with within the appropriate ranges set by the decision tree, something like that.
You'll have to share wording to figure that out. I think I, I think where this was going was the idea that once we have kids in, in in that framework, it had a section on transitions that talk about when trends in cases and hospitalizations are flat or decreasing, and the school can demonstrate ability to limit transition in the school environment, we can expand access to in-person learning.
Yeah, so in that case, I might even like to just reference that entire clause. So remaining grades per. So remaining grades per the transition clause of the decision tree. I don't, I don't have it, I can pull it up, I don't have it up, but you know what I mean? I just don't wanna create some new set or subset of guidance.
Okay, true.
Actually, if you even said, um, COVID case and hospitalization trends are flatter decreasing, that would more accurately um, mimic the language here, but, but I take Sydney's point that we could also reference the framework.
I, I think referencing the framework as closely as possible would be our best way to do that. And, um, I also like the idea of pulling in that all the other remaining grades would be in accordance to that cuz I'm concerned about the way the, um, last sentence reads, that there would be some idea that we wouldn't do the others until full vaccination of COVID. I don't know if that's true for the, like, fourth and fifth, or I don't know how that would play out, so I don't wanna.
I read that differently because I read that she's saying remaining grades coming in according to the decision tree.
Okay.
Had a vaccine, more educational opportunities. To me, that's like incre- you know, changing the hybrid structure or increasing the number of days or something like that. I don't know, Ann, maybe I'm just.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, I go with there.
Um, so I'm okay with the second sentence, but, um, but I like the idea of, um, referencing the framework with, um, with respect to remaining grades.
So are we suggesting an edit to be with remaining grades?
As soon as possible thereafter, in accordance with?
Oh, can I say something?
Oh, sorry, yes, Harlan, I didn't see you.
I really think that whole sentence clause of remaining grades as soon as possible thereafter should actually be removed. I think that the single sentence should be talked about our K-3, because I really think it's, our, what we're asking for is for these dates in context of K-1 and second and third, which I'd add the word grade after third, um, just cuz you have dates and numbers all in there. Are contingent on using the language of this as when trends and cases and hospitalizations are flatter decreasing. Because it's really even from the very beginning of getting kids from not in, in, from remote to in-person hybrid. That's the transition, and so that's what it's talking about. That's what I would recommend we add, and if we wanna have a separate sentence about remaining grades, I think we should actually add that. But I think that I would argue that that, that clause is gone because we're really asking for, and so, and wanting to seek support for this, but under the assumption that trends and cases and hospitalizations are flatter decreasing.
So, I understand what you're saying with that, but are you saying that you don't want reference to remaining grades? Or you just want it in a separate sentence?
Yeah, I think it should be in a second, separate sentence. I wanna make it very clear to everyone, staff and community, as well as our district leaders, that yes, we want K-3 in, and yes, we want them in on these dates if at all possible, but it's in the context of the framework, which says, yes, we want those things, assuming trends and cases and hospitalizations are flatter decreasing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense, and I think, I, I think that's cleaner. I think you're right.
And then we have a second sentence talking about the remaining grades. And so it's, uh, so Ann, the language is assuming trends in cases and hospitalizations. I think that would more reflect the, not just the spirit, but the actual recommendations of the framework. And to make it very clear that we're not saying bring kindergarteners in at all costs. We're saying, gosh, we certainly wanna be good stewards and not contribute to compromise any student or staff safety or contribute to community transmission, cuz we all collectively want this phase of COVID and the pandemic.
Okay, so do you want a third sentence in there, um, with regard to additional grades? Cuz it, it seems to be gone now.
Have you all wanted phrase?
Additional grades should return to in-person hybrid as soon as possible?
We just use the language of the decision of the framework, which says, rather than if schools, if the district can demonstrate the ability to limit transmission in the school environment, we expect, it just says add grades five, four, and five, but we could say we expect grades four through 12 to be served with in-person learning opportunities.
I know that Ann just added all of that, but I am wondering if, um, it wouldn't be more clean to just say additional grades will be added in accordance to the Department of Health decision tree or educational framework? Or just the framework, since we've already mentioned it.
That's simpler. And the words are in the framework.
And then, if for some reason it changes all over again, we're not back trying to communicate what it is we wanna do.
Do we wanna say added as soon as possible according to the framework?
That's.
Just to make it clear that we really kinda wanna do this now? If the framework allows.
Right, and I think that, you know, it's not that because we're tired of talking about our early learners in K-3, but I think all of us at this stage, that by January, we would be talking about secondary kids, anyway, at least middle schoolers. So we don't, we do wanna make sure that our community understands that we intend to follow this framework, given how it's being followed and how middle school students in Eastern Washington are being served right now and have been served, and we don't think that Esquaw should be any different.
I also just wanna say, in case there's any public members that love Robert's Rules of Order, this is completely not how you would normally amend a motion.
Motion to amend the motion once we're done tinkering.
But I was, I was gonna say, but I think that, that we are all five amenable to this altering on the fly.
As, as our CFO would say, this one's under Bob's rules. Um, Ann, could you throw me a bone and put a comma after vaccines?
Right here?
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And can you also, can you also say return of K of kindergarten and first grade? Cuz it just, K-1 seems.
Yeah. It's Ed's speak. First grade.
Oh, thank you. It was in my head, just didn't type it.
I think then I would clarify at the very, uh, last sentence, the board expects additional in-person educational opportunities.
Oh, good.
Uh, wait, uh.
Last sentence.
Okay, got it.
In-person educational. Okay, so.
So sh- should I ask if, um, as the person that made the motion to, um, if I can, I don't know if I should withdraw my motion, or if you would all let me, um, update my motion?
I, I would say anyone could, uh, propose the amended motion and maybe go ahead and read it aloud one more time, just.
Before we do that, can we talk about the actual dates listed?
Oh, sure.
Sure.
Cuz I think that's worth a little airtime.
Okay.
Now that we've done the, the packaging, I think it's worth a little bit of airtime on the specific date, so, um, I'd love to understand a bit more about, just pulling up a calendar here, the 4th, a, a Thursday.
Behind why the state calls him? You want the superintendent to speak to that, or do you want to speak to that?
I can weigh in in part on that. I may ask the team, um, to as well, President Weaver, but, um, what I will say and is that, um, uh, our, we're trying to align, uh, you know, in our mind with our current MOU, which gave a, a cadence to when this would happen, and it also provides advance, three days of advanced notice for our teachers. And I, I'll have to pull up my calendar here, uh, Director Mullings, but, um, and remember, um, our, our scheduled plan does not call for, uh, Wednesday in-person instruction. So I think the idea was you would start with, uh, the first three days of the month as your prep days. Um, and then you would be able to bring your students back in on the 4th. Um, that would give you, you know, you would have those two days plus the following week before you would go into that midwinter break with your K-1 students as well. The other thing, and just was to earlier comments that were made by Director Gallinger too, was I, I'll, I'll just be, you know, honest in that when we came back from break and with the new framework, I was on a more aggressive timeline and, and, uh, Director Gallinger spoke to me about that, and, um, I didn't fully understand, uh, maybe in the beginning, um, that, you know, the concern had to do with hospitalization rates and what was happening. And so I think the idea that we get on the other side of the month of January now does, i- is one that makes sense given where the, the, where the rates were, where they are, but also the, the, um, bit of hopefulness that maybe those rates are now finally beginning to come down, will start on a downward trend after the, uh, holiday season, so. Um, I don't know, the, the bargaining team, uh, members may have, uh, something else to add to that, but oh, not to mention, let me be clear too, and I know that frustrated people when we came out with the survey, but again, I, people may not realize this, but there was work that was happening over that break time as well. My team, uh, we had folks working and, I wanna be clear, we're having conversations with IEA, if not former, formal bargaining sessions every single day, to my knowledge. Um, and so there's, the, you know, I wanna be clear about that's going back to December, there's been ongoing, ongoing talks. Both sides well aware that the framework, um, the, the update to the decision tree, the new framework, what, um, really did change things. I was hopeful we would come back from break and be able to have students in by about the third week in January. And, um, was quite aggressive with my team to say, what would it take to do that? Um, so if you wanna blame anybody for the aggressive nature of how the survey went out, it was me. I was trying to push on my team. And, um, unfortunately, even as I was doing that, case rates were climbing relatively, uh, rapidly. But in order to hit that timeline, and I believe Director, uh, Meraldo referenced some of this, to get the information from parents, to conduct the, uh, staff conversations that need to happen to determine who would be eligible uh, for in-person, um, eh, teaching, to, um, create the bus runs and do everything. It does take some time, plus to provide those teachers those three days of advanced prep time as well. So that's, that's why you kind of end up in that. I, 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 as I said in my opening statements, I believe we can get the kids back in the first, uh, week of February. I think you've hit the actual date, the, the, the right date for that. Um, and so, but, and then, um, we do have a 21 day that we had brought forward, a 21-day cycle in between to, to get the first groups in, make sure everything's going well, you're not seeing community spread and all of that. Then bring in your second group. I actually think now, it's my opinion that, that, that window could and should shrink. However, in this particular case, we have that midwinter break in the middle there, so there's an extra added. So that would explain in part to the date of the 25th, um, Director Mullings. I don't know if that helped.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's great because it's like, oh, and there's just this date on the page, so I think it's important to step through a little bit of the, um, time for the case rate to stabilize decline, the time to do the, uh, staff planning, um, matching process, transportation, those sorts of things. I think the one thing maybe you didn't hit on that I think is important, um, is that, that teacher preparation time in order to be prepared, um, and ready to go into the new, um, circumstance. I think that's critical to make sure that there's no, like, rush or, you know, feeling that there isn't time to adapt there and then to, to start the process, so, um, so bringing us to February 4th and, and certainly, I agree with the, the want to add shade a little bit faster, but we have the mi- midwinter break, which, just to check my logic, would then allow for the next wave of preparedness to happen post the break for the next set of, of learners. So I just think it's worth a little talk-through on the logic and the layout of, of these particular set of dates, and just make sure we're all still in the same place on that.
Now, I appreciate the opportunity and the explanation. I think you're right. I, I know that for many who are observing this, they're gonna say, really, it, you still, we're sitting here on January 14th and you're not talking until February 4th. I hope people can understand there is a lot of complexity, um, to this, and we want to do it well. And I want my teachers to be prepared, uh, when those students arrive, because they're gonna be arriving, um, it's been referenced in it earlier. You know, um, students haven't been in school for a long time, there's gonna be, um, for some of the students, the kindergartners, they've never been in our schools, um, and so w- we wanna do this well, and it's, it's gonna take preparation and it's gonna take some time. And so I do understand that that is disappointing, um, you know, I mean frankly, it, you know, if hindsight is 2020 is the old expression, looking back on what numbers were now in September and October. I, I wish that I had been more successful in helping this organization get kids in at that time. I think we would have done a great job with it. I, and I just have to say, those staff who do see our students in person, whether it be our preschools, our special needs, um, or our childcare, they do an amazing job, which builds my confidence that we will be able to do this well.
Okay, so, Ann, if you would, um, stick a comma after February 25th, I would entertain a motion to amend the motion.
I move, we amend the motion as presented.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, um, does anybody need one more go through on the motion, or are we good? Ann, why don't you just go ahead and read the thing out?
So the, the amended motion would be, I move the Esquaw School District in recognition of the December 16th Washington State Department of Health K-12 Education Framework, target the return of kindergarten to first grade to in-person hybrid on February 4th and second to third grade on February 25th. Assuming trends in cases and hospitalizations are flat or decreasing, additional grades will be added as soon as possible according to the framework. As access is increased to COVID-19 vaccines, the board expects additional in-person, in-person educational opportunities to be provided to all K-12 students.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to amend the motion. Uh, is there any more conversation? Okay, all those in favor of amending the motion as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we have successfully amended the motion. Now, is there any more discussion on the amended motion? Okay, all in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Congratulations, that's quite a body of work that you all just did there on the fly. Um, I, you know, I, I hope that this helps all of our employees and, and our labor groups see, um, bring some clarity to our conversation. Uh, I am compelled to point out that, um, we don't have agreement from, um, our IEA to this specific timeline, but I think that, um, I'm encouraged by the conversations that we have been having, and I- and I am hopeful that we that we will have agreement when that date arrives and we will successfully see the return of those those students. Because if we all, as the one parent said, I think, I I think we all can agree that's what we want to see. We want to see kids back in-person learning. So thank you.
Okay, so I think we are good on on the very first agenda item. And let us now move only an hour late to discussion of the Liberty High School schedule and I would entertain a motion. Really, I would.
Don't everybody do it at once?
Somebody, it's right on there.
I do it, President Weaver, but I can't.
Really? Nobody will make a motion?
I don't have it up.
I I've got it.
Thank you.
I move the board accepts the superintendent's recommendation to modify the Liberty High School schedule for the second semester 2020-2021 school year as presented.
Second, and Marnie texted me that her Zoom froze, so that might be why we're struggling with her.
Oh, Marnie, are you back?
I cannot, I can hear you, but I cannot see anything on any of my screens moving.
Oh.
So it might be my computer.
We can't see you, Director Meraldo, so just know that we we're watching you.
Um, so yeah, I guess you won't be making any more motions. Okay, so we have a motion, we have it seconded. It actually said as presented, but we don't actually have anything that was presented, so.
We don't and we need to.
Clarity around that.
Present.
Yeah, I I I apologize for that. I I know, I think we'd had it, our discussion about it about this before. And and the board will recall, the request was actually quite simple. Liberty High School is following a similar hybrid blocked daily schedule as Isaquah High and Skyline. The difference is they have an eight-period, not a seven-period day. They also have a history, a long history as a blocked school. And the specific request from that community, that from the the survey schedule that we did, was pretty overwhelming in that folks wanted to go back to a fully blocked AB-type schedule. And that's what the proposal was. So did I get that right, Deputy Superintendent Almi or Executive Director Hood?
Yes, that's correct. And then instead of doing the current schedule, which for Liberty would be periods one through eight on Monday, Tuesday, and then blocking those periods on Thursday, Friday, they would block periods on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, um, which is what we asked them with the most latest survey, if that was a change that that the students, staff and parents would support.
Okay, and and I did actually remember that, just since we didn't have it on the agenda. I wanted to make sure the public knew what we were talking about.
My oversight.
And I guess I should ask, is there any public input? Oh, we should admit, Marnie, through meeting, is there any public input on this agenda item? And I don't see any, that's good. Okay, so any discussion by anyone on the board? We ready to go for a vote? No, no one is nodding, no one is doing anything. Marnie's here. Oh, she can't talk, wait a minute. Did that help?
Yes, that helps. I take it this is the Liberty Schedule one?
Sorry, yes, we moved and seconded to change the Liberty Schedule. I asked for public input, there was none. Is there any conversation before we go to a vote? That's where we are now.
Okay.
I would request that we hear from Director Meraldo, since that's her community and she probably has heard about that or information. I really know nothing and have heard nothing about.
I am so pleased with this motion to move forward. I will say, I'm not one to say I told you so much, but I told you so. Back when I first saw the schedule, I knew it was going to be concerning. Frankly, if I'd had my way and and could just make wishes, I think we would, I would have put all high school students in a six-period day instead of seven or eight. I think once we got to fully hybrid, it was overwhelming, but not knowing how long this was going to last and when students were going to get back in, I understand why that was would be difficult to do. But I think this is a decision, I understand the original decision was to allow students to have three days a week with their teacher. But I think even staff is like, their their accessibility, I think, would be easier for them to be more accessible if they're only teaching those classes in person or in virtually like that remote, online, face-to-face, twice a week. So I think that it actually helps everybody involved, so I'm very excited. I think that eight days, all eight periods, all in one day, twice a week, with all the homework that comes from that is just really overwhelming for for a for a community that has not had that in decades.
Yeah, and I have, I do know some people with kids in school at Liberty and I have heard very similar feedback to that.
I I think importantly, that is also reflected in the survey results. That's really what drove us here was the commitment to do a survey, to review the results of the survey, and this is, would it be an example of the board acting on the results of that survey?
Uh, Sydney?
Yeah, and I guess for me, I really thought it was pretty interesting how consistent the feedback was over the two surveys. So once you get through, you have a pretty good signal at at that point. So yeah, I think that was good, it was good engagement to get to the conclusion.
Okay, um, so with that, are we ready to go to a vote? All in favor of the motion to change the Liberty Schedule, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry, I I was on mute.
Everybody did that in cadence, opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Excuse me, um, and now I am actually remembering that we moved the calendar agenda items here.
Yes, the annual school calendar, yeah. And I just, I did want to say that I know Executive Director Hood will be communicating with Principal Martin and they'll get the ball rolling on implementing that change for the second semester at Liberty High School. And yes, now it's time to, we moved up the, because it's calendar time here in the agenda tonight, the annual school year calendar, and this is for the 21-22 school year.
Yes, and once again, I will entertain a motion. And once again, no one has the agenda.
Today has been difficult, it is a lot of.
Come on, guys, I can't make.
Okay, I move.
Marnie, silent, what she's trying to tell you is you can't unmute. Ready to do it.
Marnie is stuck again?
Um, yeah, she's muted.
Apparently, if I mute myself, I can't unmute myself. And I was just going to say, my excuse is that my computer completely crashed, so I have a reason my agenda's not.
Try to keep an eye on you, but somebody will tell. Okay, so Anne, are you making a motion?
Yes, I move the board approve the school year calendar for 2021 to 2022 as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, is there discussion? And and I will ask for public input, but is there first any discussion by the board? Or do we want public input first?
Well, or do we want to start with the rationale for this this particular calendar from that's being presented to us from our superintendent?
Okay, let's do that.
I can certainly do that. And I I first, I I apologize to the community. We have made a commitment years ago to always have a couple of years' calendar in advance up. We went through quite a process at the beginning of last year to develop the 21-22, 22-23 calendars. You you might recall, we actually, for the first time in a number of years, we surveyed, did a calendar survey, the results of which are are still available on our district website. I reviewed those again today. We hadn't done that for about 10 years and and this is, this is where, having been around in a place for 20 years, you have a lot of history on some of these items. And I'll also remind folks that last year, prior to having be our the ordered closure of our schools for the pandemic, during the month of January, we had three snow days. And I think we can all remember the previous school year during the month of February and Snowmageddon, we had six closures due due to snow, more than I had ever seen in my career in Washington, which is over three decades long. So I think, given that context, there was a strong desire on the part of many to relook at the calendar, try to build in more snow day opportunities because it appears that weather delays like that were becoming more frequent. And so we we took that on and the calendar is a negotiated item. There was many hours, I believe, of discussion and kinds of backs and forth. And then ultimately, late last fall, I believe it was, not this last fall, a year ago this last fall, we brought a proposal forward that the IEA, it was shared with other labor groups, but IEA actually ratified ratified it. And with this board had a conversation about it and chose not to adopt those calendars, in part because we had a really good discussion, I felt, about if we are building in snow days, it makes sense to put them strategically in the calendar in a place that we get more benefit, academic benefit, rather than just tacking them on at the end of the year or even as late as a snow makeup day in near the Memorial Day weekend. If we could get those pushed back, we could potentially get out of the snow season but be before the testing season. So it's a fairly tight window, but that's what we were aiming for. We were, we were just beginning or going, going to go back into those conversations and COVID hit. And we have been in a constant state of bargaining. We've got a whole list of MOUs that you can see. Remember, we bargained with seven different labor groups and it's just been consuming our time. And then about a month or so ago, we started to get phone calls and emails from community members saying, hey, I've noticed you don't have your 21-22 calendar up yet. When is that going to be up? You've had those up earlier in the past. And knowing that we had two count, two years of calendars that had been approved by the association, but not accepted by the board, I then approached the board with the request, even though I I I would prefer to see one of those February shortened dates moved into March as a snow day. I think ultimately that would make sense to go back and bargain the calendar in the midst of while we're trying to get the schools reopened and everything. I for for basically a day that we would be off from what was approved by the association, I had made the request, could we put this back on for conversation tonight? Because if possible, and we can get a calendar adopted for the community. Now, it is a, it is a calendar that that does make a departure from having a full week of February break, which is something that we have done in this district for about 10, 10 years or so. I do remember a time, and this would be a caution that I would give even to the board, that we had a period of time where we had a February break, a full week. We didn't have a full week and then we had a full week. And that, when we surveyed our community, the biggest issue that emerged at that time was, they said, whatever you do, just do it consistently. So we have been consistent over the years in keeping a full February break, even as most districts around us have shortened that breakup. But given what I said about weather and where we were at, I think it made sense to go back and shorten the February break, build in some some additional days. Because what that allows you to do, and again, you can look at the survey results, it's very, calendar can be very challenging because you have strong opinions about starting before or after Labor Day. You have strong opinions about not going too late into June. You have strong opinions about wanting full two weeks during the first winter break. And when you do all the math on that, it's very, very difficult to make everybody happy. So that's why I had request, we have this calendar, it's not perfect, but it does give us certainty, it gives our community advanced time so they know when the first day of school would be. It aids us as we start to think in in the next six weeks or so about registration processes and the like. We need, we needed to have some dates. And so, I mean, and there may be more that I'm missing about that, but that's essentially how we landed where we did with this particular calendar. I know it's not two years, I know the board was more comfortable just looking at one year at this time and having further discussion.
Um, I know, you know, we have some in the community that that believes now that we've had this experience with remote learning, there should never be a need for another snow day. So I think that is something important to address. I mean, there's where we are right now, which is not a one-to-one district as far as technology, if we were in school, and that could be a future thing to talk about. But why don't I let you kind of address that so that we and the community understand about future snow days?
Yeah, thank you for that, Director Moore, I I did, I I missed that part. And it's important, especially given the public input we've had tonight. And I think it's important for our teachers to know and our community to know, the discussion of being a one-to-one district is not new in this district. In fact, it was without a doubt the most debated topic during our last Capitol Technology Levy Committee that we held three years ago in 2018, when we ran our last and passed, thank you to our voters, last Capitol Levy. And there was a robust discussion at that time about do we want to do that? I've done visits myself to neighboring school districts. There's, it's quite a process to become a one-to-one district. It is not just about buying the machines, it's about buying the personnel as well in order to do all those things that were mentioned, the cloning of the machines, the appropriate software, the and all of that. So I want people to know that discussion happened. Ultimately, that committee chose not to do it. And I I have folks on my own staff here, I won't speak for them, but that are advocates of of one-to-one. There is some debate about what grade levels it's appropriate for and the like. Having said all of that, the reason we are able to push asynchronous learning right now is is twofold, really. One, you'll recall, we've pushed out thousands of machines and hotspots to our community so that we could be assured that every student did have access to a machine and to the internet, which is great, those are out there now, but that would not always be the case. We we would need to officially become a one-to-one district and build that infrastructure to do that going forward. But also, we're, we're, we have different attendance laws that we're living under right now during the pandemic. These, some waivers to attendance laws. So I want to be clear, if, when these waiver laws go away, you don't necessarily have the option of just saying, oh, we're just, we know it's snowing out today, we're just going to turn everything over and and be be able to deliver instruction in that manner and count it as a school day. I do believe that our entire state K-12 system is learning from this experience and that that could become an eventuality at some point in the future. But that's not where we're at now. I mean, for this year, we are because of those special rules and all those devices that we have out there. But in order to be able to do something like that going forward in the future, it would take some rule changes at the state level and it would certainly take an investment in this community into becoming a one-to-one district in that regard. And that, I have no doubt, will be a, if the board so chooses to run a Capitol Tech Levy a year from now, I'm sure that would be a big part of that conversation.
I think it's important to point out that there's, there's multiple kinds of weather days. And for example, this storm we just had, many of us were without internet power, Wi-Fi for multiple days. I mean, we were, we were down for two days. We saw somebody giving public input in the dark. So just because everybody's got a computer at home, doesn't mean everybody can do Zoom class. Because, I mean, even my smartphone wasn't picking up internet for about 12 hours. So there are still weather days that that we can't fix, even if we were a one-to-one district. So that's just something to point out. And Harlan had a hand up.
So I've been against this calendar from the beginning, which is why we're still talking about it. You know, I think that we need a calendar that's student-first. And part of that is if we're going to have a snow. And part of that is if we're gonna have a snow day, having a snow day in the end of June does nothing to benefit students and learning. And that's what we're in the business of. So I can't certainly support any calendar that does not disrupt the calendar the way this one does, without actually adding any benefit for students. I want to hear the actual numbers from our superintendent on what the, the survey data was from the community on the February break. So what percent of the community requested the February break stay versus what percent said to go?
The way the question was asked was if people wanted us to modify breaks in order to, in order to gain back some days for snow makeup days in the calendar. I don't have the survey up in front of me, so I'm trying to recall it, Director Gallinger. But it's, we did have a, a small percentage of people who weighed in and said they wanted the first winter break modified. A much smaller percentage who said they wanted the spring break modified. And if I recall, 48% of the respondents said that they wanted the February break would be the one that they would want to have modified. I do think collectively, there was a majority of people who said modify the breaks in order to get back snow days. And if you're gonna modify the breaks, the vast majority of those who said that pointed to the February break is the one that they wanted modified. That, that's what I recall from that, from, from the survey. So yeah, 48% I believe was the actual number of people who said modify that break. And I will tell you, if you look at that survey, it breaks down, you know, there's a lot of data in there. It's 53 to 47 and it, there, there's, there's a lot of split on the calendar opinion, I guess.
You're about right. I have the survey in front of me if there are other questions, but what you said was correct from the survey.
Glad I was able to recall that, Director Moore. Especially if we're gonna start talking about numbers, I'm gonna lean on you, so.
Sydney, did you have input? I thought I saw a hand.
So I was gonna say, I also have the survey up and I was gonna tell you you were accurate. It's a 6040 split on 40% don't change breaks, 60% change the breaks with 48% wanting that break changed. But I guess I just want to make sure before we get too deep into our discussion, that we get to the public input.
Yeah, and I was going to do that, actually. So is there any public input on the calendar? If you can raise your hand in the little box, I see one already, which is Grace W. So Grace, if you can turn on your camera.
Hi, sorry, my name's actually Ruth Walker. And I want to comment on the February break because I have kids that are in elementary school, middle school and high school. And the proposal of a February mid-break becomes incredibly dynamic. When you have kids in all three schools, it becomes very difficult for families to have a time to disconnect and to be together. And I think considering the anxiety and stress that I've seen with my high school kids, it becomes very difficult to pull them out of school. And while I have much more flexibility with my elementary school kids, to have a time as a family is crucial. And I think that compromising those midwinter breaks or that, or that midwinter or spring break compromises opportunities for high school students and families to be able to prioritize time together, which is essential and cruel, is essential and crucial, especially for people who have lived in the Northwest long enough, know how difficult that time of year is. And I think that any alternative such as starting a day earlier or starting a day later is, is a much better alternative or a holiday day that doesn't really give the family that benefit. But when you have working parents and kids in all different situations, the best thing we can do for the anxiety, the emotional well-being, the connectedness of families is to be able to preserve those opportunities for families to do things together. Now, granted, you could say that Christmas or spring break are good alternatives. Is across school district, by having that midwinter break gives families a more affordable option. It is oftentimes not affordable to travel at Christmas or at spring break because the rest of the country is competing for those times. And kids need to take a break out of the rain, out of the, you know, the cold and the, or even if that isn't a possibility, and for many years our families, you know, it isn't, to be able to have enough time to really connect and to be together. I think this change, and I've been at the board meeting this long, I think this change would be tragic to, to lose these this time as a family. I also want to comment that I appreciate that the board made an effort to come up with some dates. But I also have a fifth grader who has only done 5% of her assignments and is dyslexic. And I go to work and my husband work in healthcare. And I hope that you don't forget these, these fifth graders, these middle schoolers, these high schoolers, who in my mind are struggling even more than the K through one. And I think that this midwinter break, losing this midwinter break or spring break day so that you have some flexibility to spend time is moving against the direction of taking care of kids and families.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly Brown. Do I need to unmute? Yeah, unmute you, hang on, lost my mouse.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, I didn't do anything, that's on mute.
My name's Kimberly Brown and I still have students at IVE and Apollo. And I did send an email, but I'm, no doubt you guys were inundated this week with emails. So just wanted to say that I actually could get behind a three-day long break, a three-school day long break or a full week break. I think there's pros and cons to both. I have a huge problem with this four-day approach that's a Thursday to a Tuesday. Our high school and middle school kids go in late on Wednesdays. Our elementary school kids leave early on Wednesdays. And I really feel like what you're gonna see with this community is you're gonna see a lot of people pulling out their kids. You're going to create effectively two weeks in February that look a lot like Thanksgiving week, where kids are pulled out of school, classrooms are in chaos, teachers can't effectively teach the entire classroom because they don't want to get behind and whatnot. And I really feel like we're gonna end up, from an academic perspective, losing two weeks in the middle of February. Again, I'm fine with three days, I'm fine with a week. I think our neighbors, it's a pretty split bag, half of them do the full week, half of them do, you know, a Friday, Monday, Tuesday, or a Thursday, Friday, Monday. But I really, I just think that we're encouraging the creation of a loss of two weeks in February by splitting it on a Thursday to, to Tuesday scenario. And I think it's gonna make it extra hard for some of our teachers and staff that live outside of the district, also gonna have kids maybe on different schedules.
Okay, thank you. Dorana Burkholder. Hi, Dorana. Oh, okay. There we go, you're muted.
Thank you, hi, I'm Dorana Burkholder, IEA president. And I just want to ask the board to really consider going ahead and passing this calendar 2122. A lot of staff members are already asking about the dates for next year in order to plan for their family. I think that if it doesn't pass, it's going to be adding something else that the bargaining teams are gonna have to negotiate and discuss, which we already, have already heard and all know that we have a lot of topics that are complex that we need to continue on. And this is just going to add one more thing on. I know it may not be a perfect schedule that some of your board members feel. And it's for one year, so I'm asking for you to go ahead and pass it so that we can continue the work that we need to do when we're talking about in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there any other public input? No. Okay, and I'm gonna say that Dorana kind of brought up the point that I was going to bring up, which is, we originally had two calendars on the agenda, the 2122 and the 2223. And we knew there was board disagreement about the snow days. We knew that we wanted to do more work on it. And in agenda planning, and this is, I'm just speaking for me now, we felt that, that the easiest thing to do was to, to split them, to only approve or to only vote on the 2122 calendar now. My personal feeling is it's not perfect and the bargaining teams are inundated. So I would be willing to go with an imperfect calendar for next year, but would like to see us do work on the following year. Now, I know Harlan's shaking his head, that's not good enough, that's fine. That's just my opinion because I do worry about the amount of things we're trying to bargain. So that's why we're only voting on the one calendar. Anybody else?
I, I guess my concern is, is more philosophical. Is, is it bargaining, is bargaining truly bargaining? I guess, you know, my frustration is, is it seems bargaining is only one way in this, in this district over the past 18 months. And that's my frustration. Is bargaining is only when it happens one direction for one party to have sort of their way? And I'm, I'm just getting very tired of that, you know? I mean, this isn't a student or family-friendly calendar. And I think that, that I'm not here, that's what I'm here to represent. And adding a, this is where, there are sometimes things that are value-added, like two plus two equals five. This is the exact opposite. This is where you take away one day off the calendar, and yet we lose five days as a family to renew, and as, and as for our teaching staff too, it goes from a, a nine-day break to a five-day break. That's pretty dramatic. But more importantly, I think for me, it's that adding a snow day at the end of the year philosophically doesn't do anything in the best interest of our kids. And that's what I have a hard time with. So yes, I am wanting what's best for that and I'm willing to disagree with that, that I'd rather us get to the right calendar than to push through something that's, that's not in the best interest of kids and families.
So I'm more in the camp that although this is not a perfect calendar, it did make the move that did create one less day in the break. So it, it was a compromise from what the traditional calendar had been to create that makeup day on the 27th before Memorial Day, right? That's what we're adding back in. And then any additional snow days are at the end. It would have been better, I would have liked it more to have the February break just be the Thursday, Friday to Monday, so one less day, and that would give us a chance to add a snow makeup day in March where that day would have been more valuable. And that's what I would like to see going forward for the next year's calendar. But I am also willing to move forward with this calendar to take that additional work off the table so that our, our folks can keep the bargaining focus on the continued work to get our kids back into school on those target dates we just set.
President Weaver, I do want to point out, and I may be wrong about this, my team could correct me, but we were the ones that approached IEA about wanting to look differently at the February break and where we add days. And I agree with Director Moore. I, I, this is not exactly the way I would have wanted this to come out, but I think it is reflective of a bargaining process. We came with an idea, we did have to compromise, and that, that's at least my recollection. I wasn't at the table working it. I know that the previous IEA president and Assistant Superintendent Heckman, they were involved in that, and there was teams involved in it. It, it is not a perfect calendar. I would point out, I don't think our previous year calendars have been that perfect and they did not serve us very well when we were having lots of snow day disruptions. You know, we can probably guarantee the fact that if we go through all of this, we won't have another snow day for 10 years. But I don't really believe that. And I do think at least it is a step towards what I would hope would be a better 2223 calendar and a better approach going forward. So, I mean, that's my, that's my understanding of how, how we landed where we landed with this.
All right, we don't normally do it this way, but I've got three more people raising their hands for public input and I'm gonna go ahead and let them input. And I'm going to ask them to be brief, please. The first one is Lori Garth Green. Oh, do I have to unmute? Yeah, sorry. Okay, you should be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Well, I had not planned to talk today, but with all the discussion on the calendar, I had actually emailed just the other day to find out about the calendar for next year because we needed to plan our vacation. And midwinter break is our big family one. And we, it's, we always have to do it 13 months out due to the place that we go. So I think it's concerning to me that after this year with the pandemic and such a challenging times and all the family dynamics, people wanting to have that family time, to make this change for next year when people are already having that planned vacations. And so because we didn't have a calendar that was confirmed, we just based it on what this calendar and all the prior ones had been, you know, the full week off midwinter break, a President's Day. And I would totally agree with what Ruth and Harlan said about the importance of the family time. And to give up one day and then lose the four days, I think is huge. I think that before you had the two weekends and then you had the full week. And to now be gone on Thursday to Tuesday just seems like, just a recipe, I think, for disaster. And I think more people will end up doing the thing where they take a couple extra days at the beginning or a couple extra days at the end. So there will be a lot more ramifications and disruptions in all of the classes, both, both weeks, instead of just one week being affected. So I, I can understand that if there's a desire to change the calendar, I would much rather have that be not this next year when people didn't have a lot of notice and we're already coming off a challenging year. And so if big changes like this are gonna happen, I'd much rather see it the following year, let people know in advance. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Torrey. Amy? There she is.
I just wanted to also highlight how disruptive it would be to change it. I am definitely in the camp that we, the kids need to be in school, especially after a two-week break and then we go six weeks and then there's another break. It's great that a lot of families can get away during that time, but also there's a lot of families who can't afford to get away that time and have to pay for childcare during that time, just after doing it for two weeks. And then they go another couple months and then they have to do it again. But it is far more disruptive to cut into two separate weeks because now kids are cutting the, both weeks short and you're gonna have less school, just continuity and ability for, for there to be success in the classroom. And especially after this year that we've had, I think kids need to be in the classroom and be less disrupted. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura Gaffney. Laura?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Oh.
All right. All right, I just want to, I think, support what the other speakers just said. I think that this is a really poor calendar for our families and for our teachers. I think after the year we're having with so much learning loss, to go into next year knowing that we're disrupting two weeks in February for the gain of one day is not fair to any of our students, to any of our families. It is so late in the game to be making this change. I think if you don't want to rebargain, then it's better to keep kind of this current year's schedule and then relook at the whole process again in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this will be the last speaker, Kim Clark. Kim?
All right, trying to go through the process here.
I hear you, I don't see you.
Okay, lots of things I have to say. Sorry. First, I just want to say I have been very impressed with the level of thought you all have put into all of the topics today. You've addressed a lot of controversial emotional topics and I just, I think you've all been very thoughtful about it and I appreciate that. With regard to the calendar, I am of the please don't take away from a February break camp. But more importantly, more importantly, I think I've heard some discussion about at the end of the year tacking on snow days is not very valuable. But I think about how our family acts when there is time taken away from, you know, if we were going to be gone over Thanksgiving or something. We would emotionally be gone anyway if you had my daughter in school for one of those days. Like, I know we would have just been either on a break, coming back, traveling. We would be, you know, coming back late the night before or something. So I'm not sure that you'd achieve what you think you would be achieving. And my other comment might be, given all that you have invested in making online learning work so well, maybe there's something creative to be done where if you have to take time out of a break, maybe you could do something where the kids could asynchronously do their work. Maybe not on that particular day, but they could get the work done and, and, you know, watch whatever videos you want them to watch. And I know that's not ideal, but we're talking about trade offs. And I think that might be a way, given all that people are saying about the stress that the kids are under, the need to keep family vacations and et cetera, that might just be a solution that could work for most people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion by the board?
President Weaver, the one thing I do think I would need to clarify, just to make clear to folks, we, we have to negotiate the calendar. We, we have, if this, we don't have the next year calendar. So if the board doesn't adopt this calendar, we don't have the choice of just simply saying, oh, we'll just roll up the calendar that we had last year. It's part of our CBA with the Equal Education Association. So if we don't adopt the calendar, which is, you know, I understand that, but it will have to go back into a collective bargaining process.
Under state statute, Superintendent, the board has to adopt a calendar annually or adopt an annual calendar, not annually adopted. And I don't know, I'm sorry, I had to take a rest or break. We've been going to meetings for, I don't know if you mentioned the fact that state law wouldn't allow asynchronous learning historically.
I, I
You touch on that?
I touched on that. I said that we are currently living under a set of pandemic waivers right now.
Just wanted to go on the record, snow days will not go away unless the state allows them to.
I would note though, that I think that final speaker, Ms. Clark's talking about ways that students could access their learning. We have a lot of students that travel in our district. I want to be clear. They don't just travel during these holiday breaks as well. That's why we have the extended absence, pre-arranged absence practice that folks can do. So, and we've also looked at attendance data on dates, last day of school and the first day before the Thanksgiving break. It's not as dramatic as you might think in terms of absenteeism. So just to be clear, these are all issues that have surfaced many, many times over the years through calendar conversations.
And I would say, as a, as a person who bargained a part of that calendar, the driving force then was the amount of snow days. And people were saying that we were stupid for not having any built-in snow days. That was a significant driver of the calendar that's before you was the fact that people thought we were idiots for not having any makeup snow days built in.
Okay, Sydney's had her hand up for a while and then Anne.
Yeah, so as a, as a usually very decisive human being, I found this topic to be really one that I've gone back and forth on over the course of the last few days. I've got them printed, I've circled things. It's been a, a real process. And I, I understand so many parts on both sides of this, I really do, of why we need a calendar that builds, I think just to use a snow day irritates me. So some sort of makeup day, I guess I'll, I have to frame it that way in my mind to deal with it. Makeup day in the calendar makes sense. I, I, I even would argue that shortening the, the February break makes sense to me, although I tell you, my initial reaction is to leave it just emotionally is, I think it should be a week. But shortening that one, it seems to be the best place to take the opportunity. I think the thing that really just, I, I can't get my head around is this wrapper around to the second week. And that wrapper around to the second week is so disruptive from a, I guess I say that from a working family with two working people and having to deal with what does that childcare look like now on both sides of that week. I, I struggle with it from a, you know, it's just now short enough that we, you know, you can't leave and go further if you could. Or, you know, get in your RV and go further, whatever that thing is. I, I just, the makeup of this change for me, I can't, I just can't get myself over the hump for. And the difficulty or the additional time to rebargain, it just isn't enough to make me, to make me get there. So I think, I, I guess for me, it is that crossover to the second week that I cannot get myself out of. It, it just, for me, it doesn't make sense. And I agree, you know, with Harlan, we look at going from nine days to less, five, four, I guess five days in order to save one somewhere. I, I can't get there. And then, you know, so if it tacks on at the end, maybe I'll be sad about that when we get to mid-June. But for now, I think we, we got to go back to the drawing board.
Anne.
So just to be clear on what the drawing board would be, this is to Ron and Jake. If this isn't adopted, that the bargaining teams first have to go and bargain any change. And then ultimately, doesn't IEA have this go to a vote of their entire membership? So see, their entire membership?
Or their exec board, I can't remember.
Oh, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
They will have to take further action on whatever we decide to rebargain or bargain.
So like this particular calendar and to Dorana's point on her side, they, they've approved it, but they being just the exec board or their entire membership?
I, I can't remember Director Moore, I can't remember.
I suppose we could ask, Dorana, would you feel comfortable enough to provide us with that answer?
Just gonna say, maybe Dorana could pipe back in.
She might have to be unmuted.
I believe it was exec.
Okay.
Right, Dorana?
Oh.
Oh, I think that was Natalie. Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to unmute her.
I'll be honest, I would have to look personally as just a member of the union, I don't recall doing a general membership vote on a calendar, but I would have to double check.
I think what they do is they do like a, a survey prior to of the entire membership. They often, and it's been done different ways over the years. Again, I've been watching this for a long time. And then they kind of come up with their parameters. We come in with our parameters. We go back and forth and then that's how we ultimately, and then I, and I think Natalie, I think you're right. I think it was probably an exec board approved after that.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
Yeah, so that's, that's your answer, Director Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you for chiming in.
We, you know, I think the thing is, that's frustrating for me is that we as a board specifically asked the district to go back and rebargain this last February. So, I mean, this was an ask that was done by this board of the district to do and it didn't happen. And we're here today because it didn't happen. And I think that's what's frustrating to me. I understand there's been lots of things, but there was lots of months that there wasn't any bargaining happening. So I think there is an element of accountability, just that should be a consideration in this decision, that this was a task that was asked. This wasn't like, oh, we talked about it, like, we talked about this and actually specifically asked the district to do something and it didn't happen.
Director Gallager is correct. It did, it slipped off as a priority.
Marnie.
Well, and I was going to say, so I do feel partly responsible as president that I didn't remember and drive this forward, other than the one meeting that we did have in which we said, no, we wanted to go back. And now though, my concerns are different than they were last year. My concerns now are somewhat the divide of people that even wanted to move forward with changing and making a date, eliminating, you know, making one of the breaks shorter as opposed to other people that said, just keep it the way it is. And I have a hard time moving forward on something that is not pretty definitively going to be backed by our public and our community of parents and families. And, and there is this divide of, yeah, I hate when it ends up at the end of the year and I've already made my vacation plans. But I don't, I, I guess I'm trying to compare with what learning loss than people who are going to sit back and go, well, I guess I'm just taking Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off and I'm going to have an even longer vacation time because I want that full week, that full time with my kids. What, what learning loss does that equal versus the learning loss of not going to makeup days at the end of the year? Not going to makeup days at the end of the year is virtually no learning loss because not much learning is happening then. So I want to apologize as president, not driving and getting this done and ensuring that that was in front of the administration's mindset. But in some ways, I'm not sure that moving forward with this calendar, especially given we were talking in February about displeasure of our calendar and that was like the biggest deal to us. And now it's like, just get my kid back in school. Next year, I need them in school more than anything else. And then I'm going to want that break of family time in February. And I don't know that I can handle one more big change to how things have been done. So I'm, you know, I know that something needs to be done. We want to get out, communicate to the public, but I just don't know. Do I want to communicate something that I'm not satisfied with? And will they be patient enough with us? I realize it's already January. Some of them are trying to make their plans for next February. But I don't have an answer that I'm happy with.
Well, I'll tell you, Marnie, the calendar is never going to be the same from year to year because Labor Day is the biggest driver and when it falls. So I bargained and created many calendars for the district and with the district. And so there's no, there's no roll up of a calendar. It has to be renegotiated every cycle because no data, it's going to change. We've polled the community on this several times and they're always split. I want a shorter break, I want no midwinter. They're literally, every time we've surveyed them, Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, we've not had any actionable data from the community on a direction of a calendar.
You, you don't get strong consensus on anything.
There is no consensus on the school calendar. All I know is we have need a hundred and eighty days approximately between the end of August and the middle of June. And nobody wants to get out that fourth week of June. So then you start, I mean, literally, it's just a math problem every year. And Marnie, you know how that math problem goes. Depends upon really when Labor Day, Labor Day is a huge driver when it falls. That's why we're starting before Labor Day. I mean, I personally, operationally need the calendar on the budget side. It sets a huge amount of things up for employee calendars. And we also have construction issues. I really would like to know when the buildings are opening so that I can, you know, finalize some of those dates as well. So it's, it's, it is more than just midwinter break and learning loss. It also drives a huge amount of operational. And quite frankly, it did fall off the plate because February, you're right, if I recall, and we were a day apart. You told us to go look at, I think it was just a day during exec session and then COVID hit. And quite frankly, I lost the ball. So, sorry about that. It was not my top priority at the bargaining table. My apologies as well. But, I mean, that's kind of, for, for my two cents on the operations side, it does have an impact. People keep asking me every day about when the calendar is because that sets the employees' calendars and contracts for the next cycle as well. So it is important we take rather quick action.
And I will say that I, as a board member, has been, have been asked several times about the calendar and about what happened and transpired as far as after we asked for that to go back to be re-discussed. So, I was asked several times over the past twelve months.
Okay, well, I think we have a motion on the floor. We should probably take a vote and then see where we end up. So all in favor of the motion to approve the calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, the motion fails.
So we've got work to do. Thank you for that discussion and thank you for entertaining my request. It should have come forward obviously months ago. I have to own that. So we'll have to go back to the drawing board and figure out, you know, how we can push this item onto the table in our conversations with IEA. And we'll try to work as quickly as we can. I would ask, you know, how, if there was any thoughts on how we would prioritize this. But I, I think this has to come up as a top priority so that we have time to get our registration materials and the things that CFO Cooper talked about. So we'll have to double down our efforts. I really do appreciate the conversation. And we'll probably have to have some more conversation too as we prepare to head into those conversations. It is, it's, it's just going to be a while before we're going to have another opportunity to bring a calendar forward for you to consider.
Right, the bargaining team will need clear direction because originally we were only one day apart and now there appears to be an acquiescence on the break in February. So that, that, that gives me not clear direction yet.
I'll have a follow-up conversation with President Weaver and with Director Maraldo as we do agenda planning too. And can do some, I can do some outreach to individual board members, try to get a sense of, of what might guide us to the next phase.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Anne.
So given that this calendar was attached to our agenda, and I realize in this meeting, we have just voted it down. But I'm wondering if we need to be actually communicating that with our community. Because to the extent people have looked at our agenda and they grabbed that calendar, will people realize that we've sat here in this meeting and voted that calendar down?
Well, we'll have to communicate anyway because we don't have a calendar now for the twenty-one, twenty-two.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we need to communicate. We do not have a calendar and we don't, we will, because it may take us one month, two months longer to develop a calendar that will be approved both by the, not only bargained, but then approved by both the IEA and the board. And I think we need to make that clear to the community because I don't want the community to think this calendar that was attached to the agenda is the calendar for the coming school year.
Fair point, fair point. It's been a, it's been a relatively routine thing that has happened over the years. So I can see why people might think that way.
Well, the board doesn't often vote things down, so, yeah.
Right, so I think we need to provide to the community a timeline, of course, the board would probably like one, on when we think we can have the next opportunity to take a look at a calendar. And that needs to be shared with the community.
Yeah, and I just unfortunately can't answer that question right now, Director Moore.
We'll have to make a decision if we're going to bring back one year or two or three. So that's the other thing.
Well, we, we need to get a sense on even the direction we want to go. And I'm sure Ms. Burkholder will be having a conversation with her exec board as well. And yeah, we'll just, we'll reengage in the process.
But if you're talking about wanting to get direction from the board in the direct way to go, then we need to do that ASAP because otherwise you don't have a direction. And I don't know if you
Well, I've gleaned some of that from tonight, Director Moore. I am a little confused about the February break. You know, again, our community has been split on a February break for a long time. I, I heard tonight, but I want to be clear. I heard from a handful of people tonight. We surveyed hundreds and hundreds. So I just want to be careful on that front. But I did hear the concerns that were raised. And I heard the concerns that were raised from the five of you as well, and that's important. And, but as I said, I can talk some more with President Weaver, Director Maraldo through agenda planning and some, you know, individual outreach so that we can, I got to try to provide some kind of guidance to the team as they go forward on this task.
Harlan.
Is it possible, I don't know if this is even possible, but in order to expedite the process to have a joint study session with the IEA executive board and the school board to talk about a calendar for our next meeting?
It, it, it would be possible, whether or not they would want to participate in something like that. I, I would, we could certainly do that outreach. We'd have to get our calendars together as well and try to figure out a time we can do that.
Yeah.
That was a really collaborative effort of, you know, how can we come to all of us kind of agreeing? And I saw Dorana.
I saw her and then she just
I'd love to hear.
I think she maybe had a thought.
Rather than going back and forth and separately talking, can we have a conversation? I know it's not something we normally do, but so that we completely understand each other's rationale.
I don't know if she wanted to weigh in on that or not, she seems to have vanished.
She may want to process that. She may want to process that one a little bit more too.
That's fine. Um, yeah, I mean, what I heard was either. Just leave it alone and leave the February break or take two days off of February break and make them into appropriate snow days. But the, the midway compromise wasn't working for anybody. Okay, uh Marty.
Well, and, and back to the, because I love it as a work study where people, people are bringing in data that they have. Where we can go over in more detail together what the results were. And I'd love to, because what I'm not hearing is perspective of the teachers. Like, how did we get to where we're at from their perspective? And I'm really interested in their thought around that.
Right. And I guess part of that would be the perspective, how eliminating one day of the break turned the break into touching two weeks. Versus if.
I can tell you, because if you did it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, no one would come on Friday.
Well, agreed. You have all these people talking about Wednesdays and why bother going to school on a Wednesday if it's budding up against a break? Okay.
Natalie has input.
And it, it's been a little while. So um, but I believe my memory serves me correctly that a big driver. Of that Thursday, Friday, and in the following week was because of our high school schedules. And the way that students would, you would minimize the classes. You were trying to make um. Even amounts of class periods that they would miss based on our new high school schedules.
Eight, eight, eight and the seven period block.
Yes, it was very intentional. It makes no sense if you just look at it from a calendar aspect. I see why people are like, that's so weird. But it really was absolutely intentional and I believe instructionally uh, uh motivated. So it was to actually preserve the instructional minutes um equitably across. The seven class or seven or eight class periods that students were taking in high school.
And remember immediately following Snowmageddon, where peo, people thought we were, didn't have enough snow days.
I, I just think it needs that, you know, that's a nice theoretical thing. Versus the reality is what are, what is a community and parent, family is going to really do? And I think that, that needs to be taken in a huge consideration.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have work to do.
Yes, we do.
For, for just a moment, I was thinking, oh, great. We're at the end of the agenda and I remembered how far forward we pushed that. Um, so we are now um, an hour and a half behind and we are up to. Monitoring ends to part two academics and once again, I would entertain a motion. And once again, no one wants to make one. Come on, you can do this one without the paper.
Okay, I move the board accept the monitoring report for ends to part two academics and foundations as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Uh Superintendent Bailey.
So I'm President Weaver. I am going to attempt to get us back a little bit of time here. Um, because I know that the board has had these uh monitoring reports um for a while now. You've had an opportunity, you're all do such a nice job um previewing your, your work going in. So I just had a couple of highlights I'm gonna speak to and then I think it's best to just kind of open it up to questions from the board at that point. Um, we, I will admit to having uh kind of cheated just a little bit on this. Um, because um as you go to page two and rem, just as a reminder, this is part two of ends two academics and foundation. This is really probably our most robust end statement. Um, and this particular portion of it focuses more on the, the science math aspect of. We did the uh history, social studies um during uh the last board meeting. Um, but I did update the um, the graduation chart. Um, and I mentioned last time that, you know, how happy I was that uh we had seen a bump up in our on-time grad rate to 93.2. Um, I feel like we're starting to see some of the fruits of the work that we've put in over the years, which has been a lot. Um, mind you, we um, congratulations, of course, to our staff and our students for all the hard work they do to. Improve this on-time grad rate. But just as a reminder, um, this board has um. Supported grad specialist being added to our schools, increased counselors, both mental health and guidance counselors. To support our students through this um process. We provided optional seven period day and optional nine period day back before. Uh, when we had ra, when the, the state and this board raised the grad requirements. Again, another amazing thing. If you look at that chart and you see all of those on-time grad rates in the nineties, at the same time grad uh. Uh, requirements actually increased. So it's even more remarkable what our students have been able to accomplish. But then um, uh advocating for and promoting in a levy, uh an EPNO levy. So that we could begin a seven period day and using some of our, our McCleary money. I believe that has also helped. We've done work behind the scenes with our registrars um to make sure that our data is cleaned up and accurate. So all of that is pointing to improved on-time grad rates. Now, I'll be honest, um, the class of 20, what is unique in that um the state did have to step in because of the forced closure last March. And um create some waiver opportunities, but our students um just did an amazing job. Resulting in what you see now is a 95.6 on-time grad rate for that class. Previous year, 93.2. I like where the trend is going. I'm not going to lie, I'm very nervous about the class of 21 and given the circumstances that we're in with remote learning. And wanting to support students, we, we know that there are more senior students struggling than um in a typical year. But having said that, I think that there's been a great concerted effort from the board. Right down to the teacher level um that has created a structure. And from what I can tell, um, that grad rate, while grad rates were up all around us, which is a good thing. Um, part of that I'm sure has to do with the waivers and so forth. The, um, that is the highest grad rate that I've ever seen in, in this district. And it's also one of the highest grad rates that frankly, we've ever seen from a public school district um in this region. At nearly 96%. So kudos to everybody. Just wanted to point that out. Now, I, the other thing, and I'm sure, I know the board does this, but I want to encourage people. There's a lot of really good links in these reports. This is a great way to learn about your public school district, not just this report ends too. But ends three on uh, um, our citizenship and our um, our, our other ends and executive limitations. But specifically, I spent a little time recently on the ERDC data and it's a couple of years back. The, that, that is the data that um we are able to access on how our students are doing post-high school. And remember, this is upon graduation. And that is very encouraging. When you see that two-thirds of Issaquah students go right out of uh, uh, out of our high schools into four-year schools. And a, and another like 30% of them uh pursuing um two-year or some other type of post-secondary ed. Um, it's really remarkable. That data, it's, it's significantly higher than you see the state. Um, then when you see where those students are eight years out and you see what a high percentage of them actually have attained bachelor's degrees. And what their earnings are. Um, it just makes me, it, it gives me a lot of pride in the work that our teachers and our support staff. And administrators and everybody is doing to help ensure that our students will be prepared. And in that ERDC data, I'm seeing a lot of statistical, statistics that tell me our students are not only prepared. They are excelling um compared to their peers as well. So those were just two areas that, that I had personally highlighted. The, the team has done a great job of updating the report, embedding the links. Um, the, I, and I guess I do want to also just say the disaggregated grad rate data is actually more impressive. When you look at our um Latinx students, our black students and the gains they made. The challenge for us now is going to be to uh sustain those gains going forward. Um, but like you saw in our EL 11 discipline report, we have real evidence. Um, that we are narrowing some of these opportunity gaps in our system. And I'm incredibly proud of our students and staff for being able to do that. So I think Director Weaver, it might be a good time for me to be quiet. I know I've got other staff here who are prepared to address questions as well. Uh, but for the sake of time, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet right now and take questions uh from the board.
All right. Are there questions from the board?
I might have missed this um from uh the meeting discussion last time. But can you comment on the graduation rate increase on how much of that is due to the state allowances? Of the flexibility of last year versus what you truly believe it would have been otherwise?
You know, I, I don't know, um, Director Gallager, I, I don't know if Executive Director Hood, who I know was very active. In staying on top of the state board and all of the, what they've been up to in OSPI. Donna, do you have any thoughts on that about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
And I can't say, you know, I wish I had more cold, hard numbers for you because I haven't looked at, at these um for a few months. But I will say that compared to a lot of our neighbors, um, and I, I learned a little bit about this from some OSPI folks. Um, in one, who attended some of the state board of ed meetings too, we really did not uh ascribe as many waiver codes. As some of our surrounding districts or neighboring districts. We, we really, I believe, were quite judicious in comparison. I think our kids earned credits. Um, and keep in mind, the directives we got from the state were that whenever possible. The first goal was to help the student earn the credit. So that's really, I think, where our teachers and counselors put their energy and their focus. Um, and then if that was not going to be possible, then we entertained the waiver code. Um, and some of the things that kids did, I think also were really logically thinking through. How do I put my energies toward the things I know I need to graduate? And maybe um let one thing go that they knew they didn't need, but they were very thoughtful about that, communicative. Our families were communicative. Um, and I think we did a really nice job with, with our judicious use of the waiver codes.
And thank you for your work on that and obviously thanks to all of our groups. I guess I would be more concerned if I'd seen a really dramatic increase. I think a 2% increase. Um, when our, you know, I, I, we, and it was in the ballpark of where we had been. I mean, clearly you can see we've been ranging an average of a, in the low nineties, 92, 93. For most of the last eight years since I've been superintendent for sure. So, you know, I wanna, I want to give credit to our kids too for the work that they did.
I do as well. And Ron, there was one thing I forgot to mention is, is an okay moment.
Sure.
We, we made a couple sort of technical changes that I, I have to give sort of a shout out to student information systems and to our data processors and registrars in the buildings. We started a process of reconciling at the end of each month, any students who were transferring that hadn't confirmed transfer. Excuse me. So I think that process of reconciling it monthly really started to take effect. And I think it's going to continue to make the work a little bit more manageable. Um, and, and I think we ended up resolving some of those that might have previously just kind of hung out there. Um, and we were, we're just able to catch them quicker and pin them down before we forget um that particular kid situation and family situations. I think that's made a difference too.
I, I don't want to take it all away from anything that our students have done in the.
Oh, of course not.
Set expectations for what, what I need to unpack because I know a year ago it was that our data was incorrect in how it was uploaded to the state. So we spent a lot of time going with OSPI. So um. You talked about gap closing. I guess for me, can, was there a conversation last month about the. ELL and the special education in the trends that we see over the four years of graduation data?
I'm trying to recall if we talked about that, Harlan, other than um just noting that that, those have been two areas that. Have not been um, we, that we've struggled uh just to be blunt about it. And uh, I don't recall any specific conversation. I'm not saying it didn't happen. I just don't recall it. But um, clearly, as we've seen through our data, um, uh, top to bottom, not just graduation data. As it relates to our special needs populations, we are not extraordinary. Issaquah is extraordinary in a lot of ways. We are not extraordinary in that way. I know that Dr. Bailey um, that, that is something that i, is at the heart and soul of what she does. And I'm very optimistic that under her leadership, we will see more gains in that area. But um, we do have, you know, those are some struggle areas for us. I don't know if there's other folks want to weigh in on that.
I, I just wanted to jump in to Harlan's question about ELL and maybe I'm, I'm reading the grad rate chart incorrectly. But it says for ELL that 96% graduated.
He, he, on, on, on the current for the class of 20, Director Moore, you're talking about?
We're like in the prior year, it was 74 and then it was 69 and then for 2020, it says it's 96%.
Yeah, it jumped way up.
That.
It says 80% if you open the link for.
I'm in the spreadsheet that is attached.
Seventy-four, sixty-nine, ninety-six.
I'm in the link of, off of page, sorry, I have to reload.
Are you on the OSPI one, um, Director Gallager?
No, I'm uh, the hyperlink can embedded in the report.
The one that opens as an Excel spreadsheet has the classes 18, 19, 20. You click the tab on 20 at the bottom. 61 ELL students with a grad rate of 96.3.
Um, no, I'm just on the main top page. So. It was page three, that link that's number four, which is graduation rate disaggregated data source OSPI 2020.
Oh.
Right, and.
When I click on that and look at that very first front page and I look at it. And then the. When it goes under.
Oh yeah, that's not at all consistent with.
Okay, I'm, I need to make sure I've got the right one that I'm looking at.
Am I looking at wrong data?
Grad rate by ethnicity, race program. Is that the one we're talking about? That link, the first link?
No.
No? Um.
Fourth link on page three.
Oh, on page three, okay.
Yeah, I was looking at a link on page two, Harlan. For you to go look at while we look at this, go up and look at right underneath the uh. Grad rate chart by each year are two links, grad rate by school and then grad rates by ethnicity, race slash program. And that opens a spreadsheet and that's what. That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so then the question would be why are these?
Yeah, why are they different?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to look at this right now too.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go look at the one that Harlan. It, there was a lot of data in this um report. So it's.
Oh. Ron, I can.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to, I can speak to that second one, the one that um Director Gallager was opening. That was uh done by our data specialist on TLS coming out of the OSPI tableau. Um, and it was done last week. Um, we did not compare it to the other chart in E2. And so we did not pick up on the difference in that area. Um, but we. Uh, so I would have to, I would have us, I, I could have us go back and look and figure out why, why we see those two. As inconsistent with each other because I agree that I, I see they're inconsistent, but I just wanted to fill in the.
What is Harlan, which number are you looking at? Because even in the thing that Harlan has pointed us to, it says non-English lang, wait, no, non-English language. I get, okay, sorry, that confused me. I had a double like negative. Okay, which one are, which? Where is the one that's just English language learners?
Oh.
I'm having a.
You have to scroll up and it's number five because also.
I think I see that, I think I see the, I think I see the reconciliation here.
Oh, I see. Okay, I got to English language learners. 80%, 80.33%.
Yeah.
You got it.
I, I see that number now on the report card, Reg. Yeah, the 90, the 96.3 is right below it in the non-English language learners. And I'm wondering if we had a, uh, some sort of error on that other report by, by race somehow.
Hmm.
And special education.
Yeah.
Non, I noticed that in the, in the first report we looked at, it said ELL had grad rate of 96.3. But in the other report, it says the non-ELL has a graduation.
But in the other report, it says the non-ELL has a graduation rate of 96.3.
I, I see now what they did, yeah.
I, I think that that 96.3 in the first one is actually the non-ELL. And we made a, a, a cut and paste error or some sort of
And the students with IEPs match, so that's good.
I mean, I wish that I could tell you that my English language learners had a 96.3 on-time grad rate. But no, I see, I see that now based on the report card here. So there was, there was some error that was made in putting that in.
Oh, and, and it's interesting because the one that's from OSPI, you know, if you look back for class of 19, it doesn't match, but it doesn't match because the grad rate in the spreadsheet is a four-year grad rate.
Yes.
While in 20, for 2019, ELL, it's a five-year grad rate. So
And that's, that's, the purpose of this report is to show that some groups, some groups have more students who take five or six years to graduate, whereas, so you can see that, that's the purpose of that report in there.
Right. And that, that is impressive, it seems, because in 18 and 19, it was more like 70 to 74% of ELL in the four-year grad rate. But now for the class of 18 and 19, it's up at 90% or 83%. So it has quite a increase.
I mean, and to be clear, on our own spreadsheet, clearly, you can see now what happened. Thank you for pointing that out, Harlan, that in the 20, they put the wrong, they put the 96.3 and they should have put the 80, which in and of itself was a nice gain for that student population. It was an 11-point gain. I don't wanna, I wanna give credit to them where credit is due, but it shouldn't have been put in there as a 96.3.
Got it. Can you speak, Rich or Donna, about the gap at Skyline? Like, there's a double-digit gap between Liberty and Skyline for ELL and special education. I'm just curious about what, what the district believes, why there's such a wide gap between the performance at Skyline High School versus our other two comprehensive high schools.
Scrolling down to check it out, Harlan.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm not working on my optimal screens here, so it's taking me a second to pull up the data.
I'm sorry, I asked, I just, I asked early because I didn't wanna, I didn't want to rehash if this was all
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're saying that Skyline is significantly lower than the other two?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Skyline has a dip certainly from the previous year. Right. I, I don't know. I don't know much about that yet.
You know what kind of numbers, does it have, I, I'm trying to pull up the document. Do we have the numbers there? I don't know if
We don't have, we don't have the numbers there.
Do you mean the N, the, the raw?
N, yeah.
That's what I was looking for, because it could be a vol, more volatile number.
Yeah.
If you give me a minute, if you give me a minute, I can, I can try to find that basic data pretty easily, but
Yeah, because the overall grad rate for Skyline is exceptional. And
Yeah, I'd have to do some more digging to find out.
To our equity work superintendent is that, that's, that, that's the whole heart of why we're doing what we're doing is that yes, for the average student in our district, they do really well. But it's for our students who are disproportionately impacted, that we really want to make sure that we are serving and supporting.
I completely concur.
Can you tell me what you're looking at? Because I'm not sure I'm looking at the same thing.
Is the chart you're looking at, Director Meraldo, all green with white, white letters and numbers?
Maybe somebody should share their screen and bring it up, either Ron or
Okay, are you back at that disaggregated data report? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
What, are you seeing it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I had been on that one, so I didn't know what you were referring to. Yeah, I think for me, the bigger issue is the students with disability grad, graduation rate at Skyline. Which has been my question for years and years and years, is with Skyline, it's so easy to focus on the high achievers. And I just wonder, I still wonder, what is it like if I am not a high achieving student and I attend Skyline?
Yeah.
If I'm a spec S student.
I apologize for all my gyrations here, but I'm trying to get you all to that place. Here we go. We're looking right, if you, if you are seeing the same chart I am, you're seeing the 78.57 drop down to 68.18.
Ron, I'm realizing too, that previous column is the five-year grad rate for 2019. That's the other thing that makes this chart, I, I find it a little difficult to read.
Yeah.
It's a previous class.
Right.
Right, but it's a five-year grad rate, not a
Right.
Oh, I see.
It's, so it's not apples to apples. I just, I wanted to point that out.
I'm, I'm just looking at the last column and comparing it to schools.
Yes, on that you can do. Yep. We do have somebody that has public input. I don't know if at some point we want to take it.
Um, is this a good point?
Can we wait till we finish the board discussion before we do a vote? Then I would rather have a I think it would be disruptive to our conversation.
Okay.
I think so. We're gonna take it afterwards, correct?
Yeah, well, let's finish the board discussion and then we'll
I wonder if she is one of our staff.
I, I don't know.
She's nodding her head that she's a staff.
She's a school psychologist at Skyline High School, so she'd actually have a lot of information about this. Meg is near and dear to my heart, so.
Thank you, thank you, Donna. Do I have permission to speak? Is this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, yes, I've worked with Donna. I've been at Skyline now for five years. I'm the school psychologist and I'm extremely passionate about special education. I, I know the board, I have written several times to advocate for our students. But on this particular issue, I haven't. So, um, I was not completely aware that Skyline was, had a lower rate than other schools, but there are some things that our very dedicated team has been working on that we would like to see at Skyline. And I do regularly talk with the school psychologists at the other two high schools. And we kind of find out where things are different. And we are wanting to see some continuity at the three schools, which we currently don't have. Um, one thing at Skyline is the classes that are offered. So for example, if students are having executive functioning difficulties. Sorry.
Meg is apparently a dog owner as well.
Sorry, I don't have, I don't have power still. It's like day three. But, um, we only have learning strategies for students that qualify for IEPs if they have executive functioning. And then guided studies, which is a general education course, is only for freshmen at Skyline. Whereas that is a course that's available at the other two high schools for any grade. And so sometimes we tend to have students taking more special education class than others. And so that can make it harder to get other credits. And then I think more so at Skyline than other schools, we tend to have students with anxiety and school avoidance. And so we have a lot of partial schedule students. So if they're not graduating in four years, that's actually something, we're just celebrating that they're still coming to school. We are getting them to that graduation, but it might take a little bit longer. And then the last piece, which we'd like the district and the board to think about, is we have been pushing for a couple of years to try to have Algebra I be able to be taken over two years instead of just, instead of just one year and have that be something that all students could take, that you wouldn't have to be special, a student in special education to take that. Whereas right now, if you take it over two years, you have to qualify in special education to do that. And that's something we think, especially after this year of remote, it would be helpful for a lot of students to have that option. So we are open to any suggestions, but just, just know that we are really working hard on it. And we have a great team up there at Skyline. So, thank you.
Since Meg raised that Algebra, I wanted to mention, we did offer that at Skyline actually for a time. And when we switched to Core 24, it became very challenging because students didn't want to essentially spend two years on, on one course and end up losing a spot in their schedule. So with the seven-period day in place, it's possible that we could actually get the student enrollment back up.
Marty.
Well, then to that point, um, so I've, I'll, I'll be looking at what that five-year is. I would have loved for my student to have had the opportunity to have a smaller truncated schedule and take longer. And I even asked about that. I'm like, is there any way we can do five classes and have him spend the next year? So I know that he's getting that. So I love those ideas that are innovative. My, my say is that we have specialized students till they're 21. And I think that we do a lot for our kids who are severely impacted, and we have a wonderful ACT program. But if you are in the general ed and you're, you know, 80% of your time in the classroom, if you're a specialized student, you don't get anything really to help you through 21. It's like, well, you're going to graduate with all the other kids and we're going to treat you just the same. And so I actually then, that, that really helps me. And then I appreciate that because I'm never one, I want our graduation rate, I like that the OSPI now looks at it seven years out because for the longest time they didn't. And I said, it doesn't make sense because that's my goalpost. When are we done with you? And I think that many of us were, a few of us were on the board when a former board member's child graduated and it was in that, just about to turn 21, and they still came back and did it and got that diploma. And that board member was able to offer his diploma to a student.
Do we have other questions? Oh, Rich.
I just, I did want to say, I tried to do a little bit of quick looking at the data on ELL and notice that our class sizes are very small. You'll notice that in the Liberty ELL four, five, and six, seven-year grad rates that you have three blanks. That's because there were less than 10 students in that grad class in that category. And in Skyline, you'll notice they, they've only, they, they had, Skyline had, was it 36 total ELLs last year in all four grade levels. So those numbers are pretty small. And we do find that our, when we have very small numbers, the, you know, that just the volatility of the data can be pretty significant. So I just, I don't, that doesn't fully answer all the questions. I think one of the things that's interesting about grad rate with ELL is looking at students who have exited ELL programs and looking at their grad rate, which we've, we have seen, seen that be, I, I've seen their data in the academics has been very strong. So I would assume that their grad rate would be strong. So I just, I just wanted to throw that out there because it's not looking at all students who have an ELL background. It's looking for students who were actively ELL that year. Does that make sense?
President Weaver, I, I want to thank Meg for chiming in. That's certainly not an expectation. If you happen to come to a school board meeting, that you might do that. But I appreciate it. And I guess what I really appreciate about what I heard was there seemed to be an awareness and some problem solving that's already taking place. And that's encouraging to me. And I like it when they're reaching out to their colleagues within the system, hey, what are you guys doing? And, and sharing and trading information in that way too. So I just appreciate that coming from, from Meg tonight.
Well, and I think it's important to the board that our students do have a consistent experience in the Isacua School District, no matter what school they're in. So I would hate to think that we're doing something at Liberty that's dramatically different from what we're doing at Isacua. So, yeah.
I didn't hear dramatically different, but I did hear different and that those differences could, could make different, could be advantageous to students. So, yeah.
Uh, board, other questions? Going once. Harlan.
Hey, I was looking at the trend of the enrollments that you included for the Anatomy and Physiology, I think it was, at Isacua. It was down a lot last year. I want to know, is that a consequence of remote? Or interest or new teacher or? I just know that's sort of one of the hallmark programs at Isacua High School, so.
I genuinely don't know. Leisha might know more about that. I am not certain.
Anatomy and Physiology at Isacua High School is not a CTE program. So I actually don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to look because it's not in my repertoire in that regard.
It's, it's different than the sports medicine program that is CTE, correct?
Yes, I'm assuming that Harlan is referencing just the course that is Anatomy and Physiology as opposed to Sports Medicine.
Sorry, Leisha, that was, that was a bad toss to you. I'd, I'd have to find out more, Harlan. I could certainly talk with Principal McCormick about that and get, get the information back to you.
Got it. Yeah, it's the, in the chart, IHS Anatomy and Physiology College in the High School.
College in the High School.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Marty.
I know I'm going to hear why, and that is all about orchestra, but it still bothers me that Pine Lake has one STEM class for their middle school. Because I don't know, is that based off of a recent survey of parents and families and students? Like students, do you want something? Or is it that, hey, this is what we keep offering to kids, so this is what they keep taking? And it is wholly out of whack from the other, uh, middle schools. And we're building another middle school. And I have a feeling there's going to be at least a couple of STEM classes there. And I don't consider the tech class a STEM class. I think it
I can't speak for all Pine Lake families, but I will say that the orchestra and enquires are very dominant programs.
I mean, I think, I think they are in the other schools, but it's, again, if something more was offered, would students want to take it? And I don't know that we're asking that question.
Uh, Director Meraldo, great question. And what I would add is even today, I was working with Principal Caponegro, who has submitted already interest in opening, so the chart on the data shows computer science discoveries. They have been adding to that. And so I was working with Principal Caponegro today. They are adding computer science, well, they have computer science one. And now they have two, and they're adding three for next year. So they are building on to that computer science class, which is, which is continuing to push the, the ball in that right direction. I do agree, when you look at the STEM chart, Pine Lake has not offered as much. That is an interesting and delicate balance between what students are asking for as far as their signing up for classes, those powerful programs such as music, fine arts, and things of that nature. But I've been, I, Principal Caponegro and I have had many conversations and have been dedicated to pushing that in that direction and increasing that. So I thought it's timely that just today, I was working with her and our TLS department to assign state course codes because we are building upon that. Now, I will say that those are STEM classes. They, they are similar to a CTE, but they don't have that CTE label because it requires the staffing who teach that class to have that certification. But
BB steps.
Yep, point well made. And yes, we are growing it, although I agree, I'd like to see more. But, you know, we're headed the right direction. I'd rather have, it's going up and not down, so that's a good sign. And yes, Middle School Six, while we are still establishing curriculum and we are still in the process of even boundary for that school, there is intention with the construction process, working with capital projects, to have CTE space in that building. Because those are classes that we find also are of high interest for students. They like those classes, and so we want to try to offer those.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'll say, I'll add in with the new middle school too, something that might have been of interest as far as the STEM middle school CTE courses is in that space, we have kind of a dedicated CTE lab. We're going to do some robotics and computer science courses. But we're also going to pilot a new program there when they open this But we're also going to pilot a new program there when they open this next fall. And it's a metal, medical detective STEM class. So an emphasis on applied sciences, kind of for our health sciences pathway. So that'll be the first course that we're launching at the middle level. It'll kind of launch into that type of STEM as opposed to a lot of the computer science and robotics we have. So excited to do something with that real emphasis on applied sciences.
And Leisha, is that part of the uh, PTL curriculum?
Yes, um, it is part of Project Lead the Way.
Okay. Which uh, that's what our robotics and automation and those classes are part of the, the Project Lead the Way um, uh, series of coursework.
Okay, now Sidney.
Um, so the talk of CTE, I've, I've been sitting here on this ERDC data. And I guess um, what I want to know is, do we have any, is there any data that talks about entrance into the trades post-graduation? This is, this data is about obviously four-year college, two-year degree. But as I've been sitting here looking at while you were talking about CTE, do we have anything that would indicate like we, there's a large percentage, large. It's over, I think it was at 19 on a different chart or so percent that had none of these extra like four-year, two-year college. So I guess it just made me wonder, do we track it all or do we know anything about trades post-high school?
I can speak for us as a district tracking. It's not tracked through ERDC and such. Um, I think the best way that we've been doing that are some of the post-high school surveys that we send out to students. And if you wanted some of those data pieces, I can follow up with our college and career specialists. Um, I don't have like numbers off the top of my head as far as trade entries. Um, Donna, you might be able to speak to that a little bit too.
Yeah, I think many of our two-year colleges actually offer trade programming. So I think part of the issue here, like I'm thinking about Rent and Tech, one of my favorite partners that we work with. They have some incredible trade certifications, aerospace things. Um, and they would routinely come in and talk with kids and share their programming options. And I think some of it, some of those actual avenues are buried a little bit in the two-year um, number. If I had to make an educated guess, uh, yeah, that's.
Cause these, I guess these numbers are just oddly stagnant of the non, the non-degreed people. And I think, I mean, one of the pathways I think that's really important is the trades and, and that is a preparatory. Like, so I, I would be really interested to understand at least a little bit more better about how we're preparing for um, our learners for those pass, because the way these charts are done would, wouldn't, doesn't give you that kind of um, insight.
And you know, CFO Cooper actually just made me aware today of an internship um, that he came across through his work in Capital Projects. He wanted to make, you know, available to kids and make them aware of. And I think our career specialists honestly would welcome more of those partnerships and more of those guests. And sometimes they go out and do the research and attempt to get folks in. And it's not always as easy as it is to get the two-year and four-year people in the door. Um, so yeah, we, I, I certainly believe the interest is there.
Thank you.
And that's, that's really exciting to hear. I, because I think, you know, um, we're trying to figure out now with a student who's not in school anymore. Well, where do you start if you want to become an electrician? And really trying to educate ourselves. And it would have been great had that been something that was really something he was inspired to do when he was still in school and had the ability to have people that could tell him, this is where you go, this is how you get there. And, you know, if I wait for him to motivate himself to get, figure it out, I don't know how long we'll be waiting.
I, I hear you. I.
I, I am interested though. The other thing with the uh, ED, ERDC, uh, ERDC data was the significant drop in the past, I guess it's 12 years in two-year enrollments without a subsequent increase in any of the other areas that I can see.
I actually did that map too, Marnie, and most of it did go to the four-year.
Okay. So it went to the four, oh, you know where it's at, the out-of-state public. I mean, some of it's in the in-state public, but a lot of it's in the out-of-state public. Okay. I see now.
I, I mean, it is interesting. You look at this data to Director Mullins' point and to yours, Marnie. I mean, we, we clearly have created a public school system that does, I would say, an outstanding job of preparing kids for college. I mean, I think our data shows.
Uh-oh.
I, I always agree. The gamer isn't me. But it's him.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sure he'll be back.
It was an important point about, are we preparing for the trades?
We are preparing them for college, but yeah.
He'll come back and tell us that he was saying something brilliant.
I'm sure. Uh, in the meantime, do I have any other board questions? And you haven't all frozen. No, you just don't have any more questions. Um, we can go to a vote or I can wait for Ron to come back? Oh, we've gone entirely now. I think we should go to a vote. Um, there is a motion on the floor to approve E2. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is Harlan still here? Oh, got it. Okay. Nay. Okay, the ayes have it. That passes unanimously. And I've lost my place. Um, hang on.
Cap Projects.
Capital Projects. Is Tom still here or is Jake going to do that? No one from this here.
It looks like we lost all of them, actually. Tom is gone.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I.
We have an uh,
Yes, I texted with Dr. Bailey. She lost power. So some, something may have occurred.
Okay, so we think we lost the whole district admin team?
Uh, it looks like everyone that was there. I think it was just Ron, Jake and Diane.
We still have Martins here.
Heechee. Um.
I can't do the cap projects update. I don't think Rich can either.
Martin, can you?
I can either.
Building buildings?
Okay, I guess we're not going to do a cap projects update or we're going to wait and see, you know, it's interesting. Oh, Ron did text. I had my phone off. Sorry. We just went down.
We can keep going. We're almost to the end.
We are almost to the end.
This is a board meeting, board meeting members dream of all the time. No superintendent.
No.
Harlan, can you do legislation for us? Cause I know you're not busy.
Uh, one update and then one question. So the, uh, the update is, is that uh, as you're aware of, a week ago, the state released guidance on splitting teachers into two cohorts uh, for vaccine. There's been a lot of pushback from OSPI as well as the leaders of the House and Senate Education Committees. Uh, WASDA, WASA, WASBO are sending a joint letter tomorrow. Uh, similarly speaking to place all educators in the same first cohort. That's my update on that. My question is, do you want me to find time to meet with the 41st legislative legislators? We did that for the fifth few weeks ago. Um, sessions have already started at this point. But it's, it's more easy to schedule just given the remote virtual setting. So I didn't know what the desire of the board was. So that's my question.
Marnie.
Uh, I think the Senate Chair of the Education Committee is in the 41st. So that'd be great if we can get on her schedule. Um, as well as, you know, when you have another, cause I think Milin's on the Education Committee as well. So, you know, just like, yeah, so having two out of three, it would be great if we could meet with at least the education folks. Um, but if all three, that'd be fabulous.
Okay, I'll get that scheduled. And I, rather than talking equity with them, they're relatively well-versed and certainly supportive. I think I want to talk COVID recovery with them, especially since budget, big legislative session. So.
Okay, Ann.
Um, yeah, I was just going to go back to the, the uh, the WASA, WASBO, you know, um, WASDA letter to the governor. Is there anything else? Does it help for individual districts, for our district to write a letter to add another voice? I mean, it does seem like it's a really important thing right now to um, help us in long-term with schools to get all of our teachers vaccinated now.
Yeah. So Rob Perkins, I think is, uh, cause I heard on the call today down in Evergreen is keeping basically a spreadsheet. If we wanted a boilerplate of what other districts are doing as far as a letter. And so I can contact him and ask him the link to be able to see those.
Right. Cause maybe it would be fine, uh, not necessarily a whole board action, but for our board president to send forward a, a, a letter. Because it's timely. It's something that needs to be done right now.
Right.
Um, as well. So I mean, I would be fine with um, something like that.
Or if you, I, as a legislative representative, I would do it on behalf of the board if the board wanted to do that as well, since I was gonna wear my medical hat on the letter.
That'd be awesome too.
I think, I think it would be a good thing because I think we should as a board be pushing for it as well. I, I know our, our, you know, overall association is, but I think we should be adding our voice individually as a board as well.
Okay.
Well, and particularly since we've been approved to be a vaccination center.
We can do like vaccinate, offer it to all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. We encourage our community, we need to, needs to mobilize as well. They always send us emails. That's great, but they really need to send emails to get our, push getting our staff vaccinated by encouraging DOH to to have all staff in phase one B tier two.
Oh, one B tier two. That's, that's good to know.
It looks like we have the whole admin staff on somebody's phone.
On Diane's.
I, I did hit unmute. There we go.
Yes, I apologize. The, the admin building lost the internet. So we all dropped off. Uh, we can't even, Diane's phone was the only one that would get us on. So really apologize, but I have it, I, I, it sounds like we moved on from E2. Thank you. I don't know where we're at in the meeting.
We did move on to E2. We kind of lost the cap projects update, um, because nobody was there. But we can, I mean, board, can we put that off for two weeks? Yep, okay.
I think Tom would be able to deliver it anyway, because unless he did it on his phone.
Yeah, so that's fine. Um, so hey, we're up to work some progress.
Well, I actually had a few things that I wanted to share. I just, I'm stealing Diane's phone. This is the strangest thing ever. I just wanted to um, say a few things. So um, this week was, history was made in the Issaquah School District. We launched our first ever uh, Bridge to K special needs uh, program for um, kindergarten students or students who will be kindergartners and our Transitional K program. And I know I sent the board those uh, pictures of those darling um, little five-year-olds going into school with backpacks that were half their body size. And um, it, I'm just so proud of um, our, our elementary ed department and our, the, the folks there and the work that they've done to expand our early learning options. And the fact that, and I want to be clear, that is in-person hybrid uh, Bridge to K and Transitional K. So it's off to a great start. Tons of work there. Really appreciate the work everybody did. I wanted to call out, and I, I think one of our parents did earlier tonight, um, uh, ParentWiser, a, a wonderful collaborative effort between our PTAs, our foundation, our school district. Uh, we do have um, an important ParentWiser event coming up, Managing Anxiety, Stress and Parenting with Dr. Lisa Demore. That's Thursday, January 20th at 4:00 PM. Uh, I encourage folks that, that, uh, for that, that's a ParentWiser event. Um, I wanted to let the board know that we, next week will begin uh, our annual state audit process. So we will once again be hosting state auditors. I'm sure it's a, it's a virtual audit um, this year. I'm not sure how that will work. Um, ongoing uh, Boundary Review Committee work, uh, really, you know, as if we don't have enough to do in this system. Uh, we also are redoing the boundaries and trying to get two new schools open for next fall. So excited about that, that. And really appreciative of that large committee and all the work they're doing. Um, I wanted the board to know also, and um, Dr. Gallinger and I had been talking about this, that I um, with my superintendent colleagues, uh, with my WASA Metro and um, with WASA, our professional organization, Washington Association of School Administrators, I am advocating for those organizations to do what some of our legislators have done and um, really promote the idea of uh, vaccinations for educational staff. And so um, we're going to keep uh, pushing on that because I believe that's an uh, important thing to do. And um, we've talked somewhat tonight, a, a little bit about our vaccination centers. And again, just thankful to Dr. Gallinger and all the staff who have been working on that, the volunteers in our community, the partnerships, our communications with Swedish Hospital and the city of Issaquah as well. So looking forward to that. Stay tuned for more information. And then the last thing that I did want to comment on tonight, um, I've received a number of emails. I believe the board has received some as well about some um, confusion that some staff or, or some community members have around some social media sites that have popped up um, using the Issaquah School District name in there and uh, some concerns. It's confusing to some people that are these um, are these official sites or not? And I just want to clarify, there uh, the official ISD sites are labeled as such. We do have an official ISD Facebook page, an official ISD Twitter account. Um, and I have a um, a Twitter account, which is also the official account of I, um, ISD Superintendent. Um, I, I get frustrated at times. I know that people are very well-intended and they're just trying to communicate more. And I know there's criticisms of our ability to communicate, but I do want to be clear, those other sites are not official. I guess it's kind of a reader, um, reader beware. I mean, I, there's probably some wonderful information. I'm not a person who spends a lot of time in those social media sites, but I do want to clarify, those are, are not ours. They're not official. Um, we do not have a copyright on the uh, name Issaquah School District or our logos or anything. And clearly you would, um, as for example, we have lots of um, lacrosse teams, for example, in the region that use our school colors and our school names, but they are not our teams. They're just using those names. And so just wanted to make a comment about that. Uh, nothing, it's, it's, uh, you know, they're, they're private sites. They um, they have a First Amendment right to exist. Um, and I just wanted people to be aware of that. Um, that's all I had, uh, President Weaver.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns around that was that many of these Facebook pages are private and you have to ask to join. And sometimes they kick you off and people were quite upset by this. Our official Issaquah School District pages um, admit everybody, right?
Yeah. Yes, we do keep an open forum. That is our, our practice as of now. I do want to just note, uh, hot off the presses, uh, the entire K20 network has been brought down. Uh, it sounds like it's been brought down for maintenance.
They don't expect school things to work this way.
That, that's their way of saying you shouldn't be having meetings at 10 o'clock at night, I guess.
Well, thanks for that. Okay, thank you very much Superintendent Seeley. Um, okay, where are we? Announcements and correspondence. Um, we got lots of correspondence. Uh, once again, when the email volume is this high, if you were hoping for an individual handcrafted response, um, you're more likely to get a um, a, um, an acknowledgement. Um, please know that we are reading and considering every single email we receive, even the ones that aren't nice. So um, those are getting read. I assure you of that, and they are being considered. And I apologize if you're not um, receiving timely responses. Uh, did anyone have anything specific to add on that or just sent to Diane individual emails?
Nothing to add.
Okay, good.
Nothing new, pretty centered.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, we did the calendar. Okay, calendar and future agenda topics. Um, things that you might want to be aware of. This already went out to you. Um, there is a Boundary Review Committee meeting on the 21st. There's uh, the Issaquah Chamber Community Awards, which none of us will be attending because it conflicts with a board meeting. Um, Virtual Legislative Conference, February 22 to 26. Um, as we get closer to that, somebody can explain to me how that's going to work. Um,
Set up your own meetings.
I'm sorry?
Set up your own meetings with your legislators.
Is that what it is? Is there no um,
No time on the hill.
Do it? No.
No, but, but I think there's, there's the time on Sunday afternoon. It has the Zoom with the, the speaker.
That's not Super Bowl or the playoffs. That's not Super Bowl or the playoffs.
Right.
Good.
From one to five.
Okay, well, information to come on that then, good. And then, um, our first SIP meeting with the Corridor Elementary Schools is the twenty-fifth of February. Last but not least, um, it's probably time to start thinking about scheduling our spring board retreat. Um, yeah, hands, head in hands, I know. I don't know how we want to do that, do we want to send availability to Diane? Do we want her to look at Ron's schedule and send out a doodle? Thoughts? Nobody wants to do a retreat, I know, but we should.
I think a doodle is easier, but it's probably kind of getting Sydney and Harland's schedule first. Along with Ron's, like, so where do the three of them coalesce and then?
Yeah, because I'm in full stay-at-home mode, my calendar is pathetically empty. So can, can maybe, um, Diane coordinate with the three of you and try to find some times that, that work?
And then the
I'm sorry, Harland?
Uh, if everyone had had two doses of vaccine available, would they feel comfortable meeting in person?
If the governor rescinds his thing.
Said that we are now aligned with business meetings, so that will probably happen when we move to Phase 2. So I'm thinking, like, in the April timeframe, and that's a question, I don't know what people, what people are feeling like. But given the technical challenges we had with our board retreat, I'm not really eager to try another eight hours of Zoom that's interrupted more than not.
Yeah, um, I don't have a problem with it if it's legal. Uh, the only thing to remember is it's an open public meeting. Now, admittedly, the public doesn't usually attend retreats, but to the extent that they want to, we have to make sure that we don't get in trouble with numbers.
I think it's like a 25% capacity or whatever, right, room capacity?
Either that or we figure out a way for them to attend remotely, but I don't know if that's legal.
I think, we talked about it before, the live streaming end of that was, was a sufficient.
Well, maybe it would be, because we don't allow input at retreats. So, yeah, if we streamed it, that, you're right, that ought to do it, as long as somebody checks with the lawyers and make sure we're kosher.
Right, I think that's the key, just when, if you do, if we set up the dates out in April, if it makes it possible based on the law, then I would certainly be open to doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we, uh, I think, um, I would love it if we could all get together again. Um, I would love it if we all had been vaccinated. And, uh, so we will absolutely, um, try to, and research what we might be able to do. It might behoove us to push it out more into that April timeframe for sure than, um, to give us a little bit more time for vaccinations and hopefully for the, the rules to let lessen up as well.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Works.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? Going once, going twice?
I have a question. I, I had a, I don't, back in, I think, November, October, agenda planning time, I had brought up a request to hear from, like, what's the mental health impact in COVID? And what, how, how are our students accessing mental health services that we're offering? And I was asking for a report out from the district and a dialogue about that. And we decided not to do it in December, and then now I'm obviously not part of agenda planning, so I don't know.
Yeah, we discussed that our last agenda.
Talking about that, um,
Yep, we did.
Part of next
Next week.
Next two-headed agenda.
I, I have Pam Ridnauer on standby for that.
Oh. Great, I just, I didn't know, I didn't want it to get lost.
Yep, and, and, um, we did also talk about, just remember earlier in the meeting, uh, President Weaver, about bringing back an agenda item on the engagement survey and those results as well.
Right, so we could be busy.
Yeah. What's new?
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Um, then I'm going to adjourn us at ten thirty-four and thank, thank you very much, everyone, for hanging in there that long.
Thank you, sorry about the technical issues, and, uh, congratulations again on Board Appreciation Month to the five of you as well.
Yeah, all right, take care.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.